And let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. And we're gonna face that way the flagpole again. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. I'm Lori Fong, Vice President, in place of Jenny, who is not feeling well tonight, the President. There were no actions taken in closed session, and we are going to be considering items for action right now in the open session than we took in closed sessions. So, it will be on the stipulated expulsion cases. And we can do them all at once. So, may I hear your motion, Audrey?
I move to accept the recommendations for expulsions of 2019, 20-02, 2019-20-05, 2019, 20-06, and 2019/20-07.
All seconded. Motion made by Board Member Medina and seconded by Board Member Sheffield. Director Medina?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Motion passes. Are there any statements of extension? None? Any adjustments to the agenda? I see none. Any Board Member requests for information? Nope. We have received seven approval of minutes of the regular board meeting held September 25th, 2019. Have a motion for that.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on September 25th, 2019.
All seconded. Moved by Trustee McCormick and seconded by Trustee Sheffield. Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Abstained.
Passes. So, thank you for coming tonight. I know that I was supposed to call you from last week, and you all changed plans, and you think plans again to come here, so really happy to get you here tonight. And we get now to do a really cool thing, special presentations for Student of the Month and for Certified and Classified Employees of the Month. And we're honoring folks from Caesar Chavez Language Academy, Cook Middle School, and from Elsie Allen High School. So, after we honor everybody, we will take a break where those being honored can step outside over there for pictures and paparazzi moments, alright, with your families. And I think we're gonna come down here. This microphone? That. So, would Darwin Ramirez come up, please? Caesar Chavez, come to the panel! So, we're gonna certainly honor you. Darwin has been a hardworking, dedicated member of our CCLA community since it opened in 2013, and he has been a student at CCLA since kindergarten. Darwin is consistently present in school, faithfully obeying school rules, participates in classroom discussions, frequently attends school functions, and is eager to learn. School has not always been easy for him. What makes him successful and is his incredible drive, intrinsic motivation, and the amazing effort he puts into his work. Though Spanish is his first language, Darwin became fluent English proficient after many years of hard work, and is now fully bilingual in English and Spanish. Darwin is a kind and thoughtful boy, and demonstrates exceptional classroom citizenship. He is persistent and works hard to achieve his academic goals. He embodies the work ethic and determination we hope to see in all children at CCLA. Darwin is the oldest of three boys and is a wonderful role model to his younger brothers. He is very committed to his school, and in fact, with the school moving, he has taken the city bus from West Yolane all the way to Cook in order to be a part of our school. It is tremendous honor to nominate Darwin for Student of the Month. Would Eric Yavon from Cook Middle School please come up to the stage? Eric Yavon, come on now! Cook Middle School is great! As a student, Eric is always very attentive, polite, curious, and willing to help out his neighbors with any concept they need to be confused with. Eric asks very thought-provoking questions and is always striving to gain a deeper understanding of difficult science concepts. As a seventh grader, Eric and his cohort of friends were very interested in being part of Cook's North Bay Science Challenge team, which is rare for seventh graders. When he joined it, it was clear that he was quite a bright and thoughtful leader. He stepped up to fill in for the more difficult events of the Science Challenge and helped the team pull off a third-place finish in the division. Is that fun? Super fun, he says. Eric is a very respectful young man. He is always the first student to have his supplies app ready to go. Eric knows how to be respectful toward other students and teachers alike. When someone is deemed disrespectful, he is not afraid to be the one to call them out. Academically, Eric tries his very best on every assignment. He is also a very talented writer who shows his imagination and creativity through his writing, as well as his quiet sense of humor, which he allows to come out when he writes. He enjoys the story of both history and English, putting himself in the character's shoes and appreciating the many perspectives and experiences of historical figures. Eric is a great student, but he doesn't just come up with answers, he asks great questions and shows his curiosity and interest in the wider world, past and present. It is with great pride that Lawrence Cook Middle School honors Eric Yavon as Student of the Month. And right now, we're going to have Alexis Pateco Espino come up from Elsie Allen. Alexis is a senior. And this is your school?
Yeah.
Elsie Allen High School nominates Alex Pateco Espino as its Student of the Month. While Alex may not, might not qualify in terms of our highest academic achievement, he certainly makes up for this as a model student, persistently setting the example for kindness, compassion, respect, and helpfulness. Super important. Alex is the type of student who will consistently go out of his way to help others. Once as a sophomore, there was a fight in the quad area of the campus. While many students were standing around cheering and taking videos on their phone, Alex went right in and separated the students without concern for his own welfare. When Mr. Lieberman talked to him later, as he was nursing a bump he had gotten on his forehead, he responded, "Mr. Lieberman, someone had to stop it." Alex has been involved with Lincoln for the last three years. He will always go out of his way to come up, say hello, and greet you, or open a door for whomever is with him. Alex is also the accomplished musician. He has played the tuba and the saxophone for seven years. After high school, Alex plans on going to the Santa Rosa Junior College to study to be a paramedic. He's always looking to help people. He is the consummate gentleman and a true example of a model citizen that we all aspire to be. With that said, it is without hesitation that we name Alex Pateco Espino as our Elsie Allen High School Student of the Month. I'm gonna call some employees up right now. Would you all please come up to the stage and just stand right here next to me? Jessica McNiff. Jennifer Morasty Oropesat. Emmanuel Manny Morales. Ariselli Sandoval. Erica Raffo. And Myra Sosa. The order is of no importance, they're kind of how the papers came. So, Jessica McNiff, would you please just step forward and perfect, okay? Jessica is from Cook Middle School. She's a science teacher and athletic director. Lawrence Cook Middle School's Certified Employee of the Month is an esteemed and valued leader of our school community. Walk by her classroom, odds are you will run into her with her vibrant smile. It is this smile that confades her calm, inviting, and friendly demeanor toward parents, her colleagues, and most importantly, students. Besides being a passionate teacher, she has stepped up to the positions of Science Department Chair and Site Athletic Director. Her encouragement, support, and guidance facilitate the experience for many students who might not normally be so inclined to participate in sports. She also coaches the girls volleyball team and the track and field squads. She is an advisor to the school's Pride Club, advocating and creating a safe space for all students. She is co-facilitator of the Lawrence Cook Middle School School Planning Council, a group of students who discuss critical topics and exchange ideas, providing a valuable voice to be heard by teachers, peers, and administration. Most recently, she participated in a two-day training with students in the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drugs Model. She will be working closely with students as they learn to become upstanders rather than bystanders in this important endeavor to keep our school a safe space. She coaches Cook students at the North Bay Science Challenge and is a site coordinator for expanding your horizons. Additionally, Ms. McNiff is a mentor for future teachers from Sonoma State University and North Coast School of Education. She also manages the school's website and Twitter accounts and assists her colleagues with technology needs. Oh, my gosh. It is with great joy and pride that Lawrence Cook Middle School honors Ms. Jessica McNiff as our Certified Employee of the Month. Okay, would Jennifer Morasty Oropesat come up? Jennifer Morasty Oropesat, Cook Middle School, Business Office, Health Tech. Lawrence Cook Middle School is honored to nominate Jennifer as the SRCS Classified Employee of the Month of October. Jennifer has only worked at Cook since last year, but she has made a huge difference. As soon as she was settled into a new position as a business office in Health Tech, she began to create new projects to help out our school. Last school year, she created a campaign to sell more yearbooks and recruited several of our students who often get in trouble to help her. Not only did she increase the number of yearbooks sold, Jennifer was able to make sure all of our students had positive interactions with adults during the school day. This year, Jennifer didn't waste any time getting started on her next project. Along with her Family Engagement Coordinator, Jennifer planned a series of fundraisers to earn money for her eighth-grade promotion ceremony. We can go on and on about the wonderful things Jennifer does for our community, but the thing we like best about her is how she makes Cook feel like the place you want to be. She's always available to teachers, staff, and students. If you have a problem, Jennifer immediately goes into solution mode and helps you create a plan of action, and seeing her smile when you stop by the office makes your day just a little bit better. For all of these reasons and a lot more, Lawrence Cook Middle School presents Jennifer Morasty Oropesat as the Santa Rosa City Schools Classified Employee of the Month of October. Emmanuel Manny Morales. CCLA Cook, Restored Specials. It is a pleasure to honor Manny Morales for the Classified Employee of the Month for Caesar Chavez Language Academy. Working for SRCS for several years now, he started with CCLA in the 1819 school year. Initiated a Boy Circle Club after school, and most importantly, became a male role model that all of our students have developed a positive lasting relationship with. Manny teaches students at all the states and turn into a learning experience to make each individual a better person. Manny is a check-in, check-out person for several students at our school and is the first person they see in the morning and the last one they say goodbye to at the end of the day. He reviews behavior expectations for students and sees that they have, sees what they need to have a successful day. At the end of the day, he checks to see if they met their goal and encourages them for tomorrow. A teacher at CCLA said, "Manny has been such a great addition to our CCLA team. The students respond positively to his circles. His patience and kind words make the circles in the classroom a safe environment for the students to share and express their feelings." Manny is a real-life hero. Last year, they actually shattered a car window in the school parking lot in order to rescue a toddler accidentally locked in the car on a hot day. It is an honor to recognize Manny Morales as CCLA Classified Employee of the Month. Congratulations. We are now going to honor Ariselli Sandoval. Kindergarten teacher at CCLA. Ariselli has been a teacher at CCLA since its inception seven years ago. She has taught both kindergarten and first grade. Her true passion is working with the students as they enter our school system. Ariselli knows firsthand what it is like to achieve. She moved to Hildesburg from Mexico when she was 13 years old, speaking no English. She continued to join English in high school and attended Santa Rosa Junior College. She got married and had a baby while still studying at SRJC, and then transferred to Sonoma State University for BA degree. Later, her teaching credential SSU while having a second child. Ariselli has always had a drive to succeed and is an example to students and parents that they can too. Here are some of the things that Ariselli's peers have to say about her. She's very dedicated to her students. She implements new strategies. She's always encouraging and supportive of her peers. Ariselli is such a dedicated teacher, she's always willing to help parents, staff, and students. She's very generous with her time and always does it willingly. Ariselli has gone above and beyond to help any teacher, especially new teachers, and always has her door open to help. She has built great relationships with her families and supports our community. She has taken on being part of the merger group to help our school succeed. It is an honor to nominate Ariselli Sandoval as a CCLA Employee of the Month. Erica Raffo. English teacher. Erica Raffo is Elsie Allen's Certified Employee of the Month. Erica is not only one of our English teachers, but she has also been an excellent resource for her peers. She's been the English Department Chair for a number of years, and her organization, collaboration, and guidance for her department is truly professional. She's an active member of Elsie Allen's Intervention Team. The team worked to uncover the underlying reasons that a student might be experiencing academic or behavioral difficulties and to assemble practical, classroom-friendly interventions to address those students' problems. Erica has also taken the leadership roles for the ninth grade and English professional learning community. The PLC meets regularly, shares expertise, and work collaboratively to improve teaching skills and the academic performance of students. Erica has been the lead in our Sonoma State University-Elsie Allen High School Compact for Success. That work consists of connections with students, teachers, counselors, and administration, as well as connecting students with Sonoma State University. And just as important is Erica's presence in the classroom. She has high expectations for her students, and she always finds ways to connect the curriculum to their life's experiences. Erica connects her students, and that gives her a better understanding on what each student brings to her classroom. She is dedicated to the success of our students, and that is evident every time you go into her classroom. Elsie Allen is honored to select Erica Raffo as our Certified Employee of the Month. Myra Sosa. Family Engagement Coordinator, Facilitator. Myra Sosa just completed her first year at Elsie Allen High School, and she has already made a HUGE impact, it's all capitals, on our campus culture. Her duties that come from being a Family Engagement Facilitator range from translations to LPA testing, but it doesn't stop there. Myra is always willing to go above and beyond her duties. She has made herself known on campus as a trusted staff that students and parents can rely on for support. She supports parents in a way that makes them feel safe and respected when they come in for help. She collaborates well with her fellow coworkers and has helped create programs on campus that support student growth. Myra's work at Elsie Allen High School is endless. She has assisted with her food pantry, where students help distribute food to her families. She has created daily lunch clubs on campus to get her students connected. Myra has also connected the community to our school with her work on our Facebook page. She is now part of our Elsie Allen Foundation. She also supports her students by taking part in her circles when needed. She assists her parents with support in enrolling in school, lunch application, and also training them in the parent portal. Myra is a well-respected and devoted staff member that has truly embraced all that is Elsie Allen High School, and we are extremely grateful to have her part of our local family. Congratulations, Erica. Hope we're gonna do what we need to do. So, everybody honored goes out there with your families for paparazzi, and we're taking a break to do so. So, everybody honored goes out there with your families for paparazzi, and we're taking a break to do so.
Are you staff members? Yeah. Yeah. I know Myra, but she's not here. Is she here? Oh, I'm sure she is. Okay. Well, I was telling her. Very good. Yeah, I saw it like, oh. I'm actually going to go to her first job. Stop right there. Yeah, this is it. Just that meat, but like the dogs, they're still fired up. This is fine. That was inviting all my students. Like, they were psyched, you know? So, you call it, well, you're aware that it's possible. Yeah, it's written, but it's assigned on an official letter.
All right, we're back in session. So, we're seeing on school site parent organization updates, and we are going to have updates from the Caesar Chavez Language Academy? Well, no, we don't. So, all the assignments are right after this. So, CCLA, Lawrence Cook, and Elsie Allen. Do we have those? Parents who are going to stand right there. So, CCLA? We're going to go right there.
Good evening. My name is Veronica, I'm a parent of CCLA, and I'm also the CCLA Foundation President. I am honored to be here this evening and present to you what CCLA has been up to. What an amazing year we've had, and it's only October. I would like to share some highlights from last year. Our foundation had a successful year organizing family events. Our Zoomathon, gala, and other fundraisers were such a huge success that we ended the school year raising sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and two dollars. That was... I'm sorry, I think I'm getting sick. Last year, our school entered the Scholar Dollars Contest, and the school that received the most votes in their category won. We finished the contest in first place and won five thousand dollars, just by voting. Our CCLA families worked really well together to achieve great accomplishments. Our success is from all of us, and our school would not be this successful if it wasn't for our wonderful principal, Detective Rocha, CCLA families, our teachers and staff. Our foundation is working with a fifty-five thousand dollar budget for this school year. Our budget is focusing on classroom support for our teachers and enrichment activities for our school. During the summer, our school moved to Lawrence Cook Middle School's campus. Our school is so appreciative of the warm reception we have received from the staff and students with our arrival. We believe that this will be a beautiful partnership. Our foundation organized two beautification days that focused on the landscaping and repainting of buildings. The transformation has been incredible. We are also thrilled that our much-needed playground is in the process of being installed. The CCLA Foundation is in our fifth year of, our school's seventh year of being established, and we continue to meet once a month. Our meetings alternate being led in English and Spanish, and our focus is to be a service-oriented community, offering enrichment to our students, enriching the education of our students, and providing the best support to our amazing teachers. I am also very happy to report that our school is excited to announce that we are forming our very first basketball team and hopefully a volleyball team this year. And our Violet Florico group is growing and becoming a popular after-school club, a free after-school club. We had to divide up enrollment into two semesters in order to, for everyone to be given the opportunity to participate. Our Zoomathon was on October fourth, and our goal was to raise eighteen thousand dollars. However, we exceeded our goal and raised over twenty-four thousand dollars. Our school has four hundred and twenty students, and sixty percent of our student population is on the free or reduced lunch program. This showcases the amazing dedication and the level of community involvement our school has shown from when our school opened in 2013 with sixty-six students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have the camp representative from Cook.
We have the members of the board and Superintendent Kama. My name is Jamie Pedia. I am a parent of the seventh grade boy named Sebastian. I sit on the LCMS Lawrence Cook Middle School Site Council and was elected to be president this year. I'm grateful to be here tonight, so thank you for having me. First, we would like to give a big thank you to the board for its support in seeing that the much-needed upgrades were made to our campus over the summer, so thank you. The campus looked great as our students returned in August. Back-to-school night in September was also a big success. Many of our families visited the campus and got to meet with their children's teachers. I would also like to just talk about the addition of the Caesar Chavez Language Academy a little bit. This has brought many new elementary-age school students to our campus, and they're such a joy to have on the campus. We're navigating our way through this new and exciting time, and we're smoothing out many concerns as they arise. We look forward to merging the two schools into one unified campus next year. This will bring new opportunities for our students, teachers, and our community. We are optimistic and excited for the future of our campus. Thank you for your continued support and your time and seat.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have the Elsie Allen High School parent.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Haye, and I'm the parent of two senior boys that will be graduating this year from Elsie Allen. You may not be aware with all the noise out, but today's, tonight's a pretty big busy night here on this campus. We've had a cross-country meet right after school against Windsor. We have had an ELAC meeting for parents. Cash for College is going on in the College and Career Center, and you're here this evening with the school board. So, there's lots of parents and activities that have been happening here for the last several hours. You know, there's a saying that it takes a village to raise a child. Well, it takes a village to create a great school as well. It takes parents, students, administrators, the community at all, and less be involved. Sometimes, decisions that are made by one of those parties are any of these good decisions, well-meaning decisions, but perhaps made in isolation without inputs from the other parts of the equation could have consequences to programming students and schools. You all know that the athletic program here at Elsie Allen has suffered. Language gotten smaller, struggled. And if someone takes an in-depth look at the reason why, the current program is a result of a series of decisions that were well-meaning and made sense at the time, but had long-term consequences to what was happening. It's going to take a series of different decisions now and into the future to continue to change and grow our way out of some holes that we've gotten into. I do want to acknowledge the leadership of Mr. Alguera, the principal, Kevin Fowler, and Tyler Alphorn, who stepped up to be our athletic directors and tigers of the audience tonight, who are working mighty hard to turn the ship and make sure that we have a robust athletic program for kids that are really interested in participating in athletics at Elsie Allen. Technology, we thank you for the continuing availability of new tools. As always, training for staff and volunteers and parents is super, super important, but every single school in the district is looking at those tools and seeing how we can use technology to make communication and different ways of interacting with our different groups of people easier. The one thing, as a parent who's relatively technology savvy, I love the online parent forums because I was blooming sick and tired of writing out my emergency card, and it, by the time I was finished writing out two, you could barely recognize my handwriting, or someone could barely recognize my handwriting. But I've got to say, in the rollout with our particular parent communities, the online challenges was really hard. And let me share a parent's story with you. Had a parent come up to me in one of the engagements with the parent community, and she said, you know, "I've tried to fill out the free and reduced lunch form four times, and I don't know what I'm doing wrong, and I failed. Can you help me?" I said, "Of course." Sit down with her, we start going through the different parts of the form, and she kept apologizing to me about her lack of inability to figure out what to do. And she looked at me and she said, "You know, I never completed high school, that's why I'm so stupid." And I thought, we shouldn't have a process or set of forms that has parents feel stupid. And I looked at her, since I've been spending some quality time with my college-educated father trying to get his email to load onto a new tablet. And he's eighty-three years old, and he's technology challenged. I said, you know, college and education has nothing to do with being smart and bright with how you interface with technology. There's no relationship. So, it's all of us learning together to how to use these tools. I will say specifically on the free and reduced lunch forms, especially on this side of town, we have many families that have elementary school children that are not part of Santa Rosa City Schools. There is not a, um, an easy option to select when you're trying to add all the family members in the family. The only one that you have, and as I call it, forcing your elementary school kid into the form, is not applicable. Most parents are not going to understand that because their elementary school child goes to Roslyn Elementary School, that that means you have to select not applicable on the form. So, I would really encourage us to come up with some choice that recognizes, makes it easy for parents. As a ramp-up for next year, I would just really, really encourage, especially in areas where we may have parents who have a language barrier, who have a technology barrier, that don't have an email address, which means they can't get onto the parent portal, that we really look at coming up with systems and processes to support those parents and to support the staff that are working with those parents, so that we can successfully use this tool for what we need to use this tool for. And I have to give a huge shout-out to a bunch of the frontline staff in the administration building who have been working with parents to get through the, to get through the free and reduced lunch and that emergency form. If you have a parent that struggles with technology, it's easily forty-five minutes a parent. When you think about how many parents you've got, that's a lot of support structures that you need. Sally Gonzalez is the register here. Myra Sosa, and Lizbeth, and the family engagement folks. Yoson, and the entire counseling staff have gone above and beyond working with parents one-on-one, trying to get those forms filled out, and I really just need to acknowledge their efforts in making that happen. I need to talk about buses. If I was a parent paying for bus service for my child coming to Elsie Allen, I would be extremely upset. Because there isn't a day that goes by that we don't have one or two buses late to campus. One day, we had a bus that arrived an hour late for school. When we are trying as a community, parents and staff, to use a variety of strategies to instill students to be here on time, buses arriving late, do not line up at that valley. And we're asking for help in doing whatever needs to happen to get our buses here on time. That would be fabulous. Our site council this budget, this year went largely to salaries based on recommendations from administrators and staff. Our budget had us paying for a counselor, part of the AP salary, and all of the ABA program at LC. This means that there's no money to support leadership programs for students, supplies and equipment for teachers, and supporting great, top-notch programs like LCR. There has been, my understanding, some work, or there may be some monies available to help offset the money that we've put into our budget for our assistant principal and for potentially part of a counselor. And that would be great because it would allow us to free up some funds that would go specifically to some of those programs that we've paid for in the past. This high school, and all high schools in the district, have struggled to maintain programs as the number of sections that were provided have been cut. This year at LC, we received a double nanny. The number of sections given to us by the district was actually relatively stable, but we had to add nine sections of ALD, and we had to add additional sections to make sure our numbers met the agreements for Earth Science, Math one, and English one. This has caused consequences to other programs. Probably the hardest hit was our Visual and Performing Arts Division. We have some Visual Performing Arts teachers here that are performing miracles. I'm not quite sure how they're doing it, but I bow down to them every single solitary day. We have a music teacher that is teaching both jazz band and choir in the same period. As someone who is a classically trained vocalist, I'm trying to figure out how he does it, and I'm not quite sure, but he is doing it. He's also teaching band and drumline in the same period. That's amazing. We have a drama teacher that is also teaching and using her fabulous skills to bring the world of English to ALD students, and she is doing an amazing job in her own right. We're also starting to see consequences to our AP and honors offerings at LC. While in the short term, this may absolutely make sense monetarily, I just caution about the long-term consequences like our athletic program with these types of decisions. If our VAP and electives continue to shrink, how does it support? If our VAP and electives continue to shrink, how does it support all students here, including students that are on a college track? Can LCL successfully compete for college-bound students with a narrow band of electives and AP and honors choices? Does less electives and AP honors offering support the university center on this campus? And so, those are just, as we're walking around the table, when you're looking at making decisions, I just encourage you to start sitting in different kinds of seats and saying, "Are these decisions supporting this type of student, this type of student, and all parts of our community that come to LCL?" And with that, this is going to be my last parent report, because my kids will be frittering on wherever they're frittering. I truly appreciate it, having the opportunity to interact with you, and look forward to working with you collaboratively for the remainder of the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now moving into public comment. And people have submitted blue cards down here to Lori, if you still can, if you need to submit down to Lori. So public comment on non-agenda items is what we're talking about right now. It's an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board on non-agenda items. Comments on that are on the agenda will take place during the discussion of each agenda item. Members of the public may address the board on matters within the subject matter of its jurisdiction and speaker cards. And upon recognition, please approach the podium over there. We will take no action or discussion of any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except as authorized by law. And speakers are limited to three minutes. Should a member of the public have comments that perhaps pertain to a complaint against employee, the district board advises that the matter should first be pursued using appropriate district complaint procedures and speak with Assistant Superintendent Stacy Spector right there. All right? So, the first three are going to be Daniel, Tom Peck, Sophia Lucido. Okay? Janelle Payne. Okay. Those three first. We'll start over here.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Manuel Atah. I'm a senior at Pioneer High School, and I also hold a position as senior class president. I emailed you guys earlier this week about a certain issue that's been happening in Pioneer High School. Here I have 111 signatures, including mine, about the issue of Ms. Andrea Correa being transferred to Santa Rosa High School. This move has affected and truly drastically changed Pioneer High School community and spirit as a whole. Ms. Correa has impacted many students and has become a motherly figure to many. A certain example I have with her, just a memory I have with her, is that I took part in my school's Every Fifteen Minutes program. The Every Fifteen Minutes program is a two-day program focusing on high school students, challenging them to think about drinking, driving, personal safety, the responsibility of making mature decisions, and the impact that decisions have on family, friends, and many others. This event was done with the help of Ms. Correa and our school's resource officer. On the day of the funeral for Every Fifteen Minutes, a video was played where three of the well-recognized students on the campus of Pioneer passed away due to driving intoxicated. This video made Ms. Correa begin to break down. It truly showed how Ms. Correa engaged her students as she was her own mother. This is why losing Ms. Correa would truly affect Pioneer High School, because she's been there for many students, and she's been there for me. She's been there for me in a rough patch and in difficult times, and I know that she's been there for many students. I understand this issue has taken, has gone toward the decision, but Ms. Correa truly cannot leave Pioneer. If by any chance, for the possibility of having her transfer for the next year, or at least the next school year, it would be truly much more helpful, because she has a true connection with many seniors, and especially the thought of her not being able to go to graduation this year would truly devastate a lot of seniors, because she's been there for them since their first day of high school. That is all.
Sophia Lucido, Janelle Payne, and then Mariel Kraus.
Hello, my name is Sophia Lucido. I am a senior at Pioneer High School. I'm also the cheer captain and a lean crew commissioner. I only recently learned that my vice principal, Ms. Correa, was being moved to Santa Rosa High School as of next week, and I would like the school board to reconsider this decision. Our school has already lost our principal, Mr. Zalnardo, and one of our assistant principals, Mr. Thompson, last year. And to lose another administrator would significantly, would significantly disrupt our school. Our administration makes us feel safe. We have relationships with them, and they are extremely important to us. For example, last year, our cheer coach quit halfway through the season, and Ms. Correa stepped up and offered to supervise us so that we could continue to practice and cheer through basketball season. I know that cheer seems frivolous to a lot of people, but for myself and for my teammates, it's been an activity that has encouraged us to strive academically and other areas of our life. And it wasn't Ms. Correa's position as vice principal that encouraged her to step up, but it was her relationship with us that encouraged her to do so. In closing, I hope that you will reconsider the decision to move Ms. Correa to Santa Rosa High School midway through the year, keeping in mind the connections and the relationships that students have with her. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Janelle Payne. I'm a teacher at Montgomery High School, and last week, we were informed of an administrative shuffle impacting several sites across the district. On our end, what it means is the loss of a beloved and integral part of our regular family, who is going to be replaced by a substitute administrator. As a history teacher, I understand the importance of historical context to understand present events, so here it is. Montgomery has had the short end of the stick since the retirement of Director Fong. We've not had two consecutive years with the same administrative staff in the same administrative positions. And while these movements were not necessarily at the district's demand, they were at the district's discretion. This turbulence has been felt across our campus, as we have been working diligently to transform and enhance our policies, practices, and programs that support our students without a consistently rich team. But one place we have had consistency and stability is with our assistant principal, Mr. Aaron Harkey. Mr. Harkey has been instrumental in the creation and implementation of policies related to transforming school culture, improving student and staff safety plans, and increased relationship building, among other areas. When in the last couple of weeks, the district administrators decided to unceremoniously pluck Mr. Harkey from our campus, they disrupted our progress toward achieving our goals and sent our campus back into those turbulent waters we felt we were finally leading behind. His absence means we're losing one of the administrators with any institutional memory, and the administrator that students and staff turn to when times of trouble. Of course, we can understand why the district would choose Mr. Harkey to use this, to use as a relationship builder at his new post. He's a master at his craft, but he's our master craftsman, and we needed him. After holding a meeting at our school site last week, it is likely that district administrators have a better idea of just how badly they've messed this up. By Friday, we were informed that Mr. Harkey will have the option of returning to Montgomery next year, should he choose to. This, I believe, is an attempt to pacify us, but it only adds to our confusion over why to make this switch in the first place. If Mr. Harkey is to be a sub in his new position, why not send the actual sub you're hiring to that school? After the meeting last week, I spoke with my inspector and announced about staffing ratios among school sites. Why, when Montgomery has just 200 fewer students than Santa Rosa, and likely a larger special ed population who have fewer APs, made worse now by the loss of an AP, leaving a sub and a new, awesome and energetic, but inexperienced and already overworked AP to fill the gap? Ms. Spector encouraged me to use all available avenues for teachers to speak up and address the district on spending priorities. I reminded her that we already do. SRTA consistently calls for the district to make budget cuts at the district office as far from students as possible. And what does the district do in a year that we are faced with cutting $6 million plus from the budget? We propose double-digit pay increases for our administrators, and we create one and a half new, new positions for ineffective site administrators at the district office. All of these decisions, cherry-picking talent, shuffling administration, protecting ineffective administration with D O jobs, not respecting the works of sites toward meeting goals, not viewing each site as a community with new relationships...
Janelle, that's three minutes. Finish your sentence, please.
Will do. All of these things, uh, let's see, only add to the growing seeds of discontent among their teaching staff. It's why they have a bad relationship and distrust of the district office. Thank you.
So Mariel Kraus is next, followed by Kirsten Carpenter, followed by Megan Landhals. Landhals and Kelly Henderson together.
Hello, my school board. Thank you very much for giving me some time to speak with you. My name is Mariel Kraus. My son graduated Pioneer High School in 2017, and my daughter currently attends Pioneer High School and will graduate this spring. So we've been with Pioneer High School for, coming up on seven years now. My husband and I have donated much of our time and money to the school as JV baseball coach and cheer boosters, so we're really heavily involved. We love this community, and one of the reasons why we love Pioneer High School so much is the incredible teaching staff, and I don't say that lightly, and the fabulous administration. So, it's my understanding that a decision has been made to move our vice principal, Ms. Correa, to Santa Rosa High School. I just heard about this five days ago, from a parent, and I received no formal notice from the district office, either by email or telephone, or written notification. And I've heard this is effective Monday. I'm not really understanding why I didn't know about this. I'd like the board to study this decision, consider all other possible solutions, and reconsider the wisdom of this choice. Our children have just lost their beloved principal, Mr. Zalnardo, and assistant principal, Mr. Thompson, to professional moves at the end of last year. And now they're to lose their much-loved and respected vice principal after just the first quarter of this year. I would like to keep Ms. Correa at Pioneer High School and consider other options to help SRHS, so as not to disrupt Pioneer High School students any more than they already have been. I would like you to consider these two questions. Will losing three excellent administrators in three months have negative effect on Pioneer High School? The second question, what message does this send to the students and their parents when they show up on Monday and learn that Ms. Correa is gone? This is the wrong decision at the wrong time. Please do not allow this to happen until a much less disruptive choice is available. School administrators are not human resources. They are human beings, and they touch the lives of our students. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Kirsten Carpenter.
Good evening. I have been a Pioneer parent since 2009, and I've been here before, so those of you who have been at the table have all again. I am also dismayed. I am here to talk about the changes at Pioneer High School that have been proposed and/or have been decided. Pioneer parents were informed last Wednesday about the decision to move Ms. Correa to Santa Rosa High School, and then move Mr. McGurk into her AP position. I am assuming that a substitute administrator will take Mr. McGurk's athletic AP position. I'm disappointed, I'm bewildered, and I'm angry. I could go on and on about the valuable contribution that Ms. Correa makes on our campus, and I think you guys probably already know that, I think the district office knows that. I think that's why she's being moved, as similar to the administrator at Montgomery. But I challenge you to think about, when do we look at the positives? What positive change, what positive things Ms. Correa or other administrators could bring to Santa Rosa High School? When do we stop looking at just those, and when do we look at the hole they leave behind? When do we look at that trickle-down effect that LCL inherent so eloquently said? When do we look at the trickle-down effect to these school communities that have worked so hard to repair a relationship and a reputation in the community? I don't need to remind you that Pioneer is poised on Fulton Road, that our borders edge to out-of-district high schools, actually three if you include Carmel Munich. And if parents are unhappy with how things go down at Pioneer, the district stands not just to lose students to a transfer to Correa or Montgomery if their enrollment's not full, we stand to lose students out of the district. We stand to lose students out of the, out of the whole, their whole family. These trickle-down decisions take decades to repair. My husband's been at Pioneer since 1995. I have seen it come, I have seen it go. Leadership. To quote Charles Vogel from The Art of Community, "Leadership is designed to build loyalty, strengthen identity, and share common values." I think that is what a school district should stand for. When leaders create a robust and committed community, they build relationships that are effective and resilient. These relationships, in turn, can lead to profound change. I've heard at board meetings, I've read in your agendas, the board wants to make profound changes in our district. We need to make profound changes in equity issues, among so many others. This is an opportunity for the district and for the board to make a profound difference, make different leadership decisions. Leaderships are people, leaders are people...
Did you finish your sentence?
Yes, and they affect the lives of other people. Ms. Correa will leave a hole, and there can be other solutions. So I encourage you to consider this.
So two people, Megan and Kelly Henderson, and then Bonnie Holsting.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Henderson. I'm a teacher at Pioneer High School and a special ed department coach here.
Good evening, my name is Megan Landhals. I'm a fourth-year teacher at Pioneer High School and program director of the Safe School Ambassadors.
We're here to read a letter from 55 teachers and staff at Pioneer High School, which was emailed to all board members earlier today on the topic of transferring, the registration transfers that are happening. We believe that this is a decision that we should have a voice or say. With all due respect, we would like to voice our strong dissatisfaction with your decision to move Andrea Correa, our Pioneer High School vice principal, to Santa Rosa High School, even though it will be temporary. Andrea is a vital part of our administrative team, performing a myriad of critical jobs and using experience and skills developed as a result of her hard work and dedication. Moreover, Andrea is a true prospector, who has come back to Pioneer High School to serve the students whom she is passionately committed. Andrea has lived and worked as a Pioneer teacher, a parent, she currently has a freshman on campus, and is a valued administrator.
As a Pioneer staff, we are alarmed and frustrated by the decision to move her, as Pioneer desperately needs her continued expertise and support. Andrea's skill as a schedule builder, her understanding of our student body needs and challenges, and her continued support of our staff cannot be replaced. This is only compounded by the fact that we have a brand-new principal at our site this year, as well as a brand-new assistant principal. Your willingness to move her now to help at another school seems misguided and biased, as we will most certainly lose the momentum we have spent years building. We understand your need to have an effective administrator at Santa Rosa High, however... However, it seems prudent to move an administrator from a school that does not have 50% of its admin team, um, as a new position. Somehow, it seems inequitable that you would be willing to do this, as though Santa Rosa High is perhaps a more valued commodity.
After bright boundary lines were redrawn in the late 90s, Pioneer spent a decade or more searching for the stability and direction it lost. The new child left behind years followed and were difficult, but we as a staff built programs not only to attract new students, but to excite and support them. These specialized programs included the Early College Magnet Program, which has been a wonderful success, the Graphic Information Systems Program, GIS, our culinary program, and the Health Science and Biotechnology Program, HSB. Additionally, our teachers and administrators have dedicated themselves to a STEM program and a new Spark Center.
Please finish.
That are the jewels in the district. Uh, this would not be possible without Andrea Correa. Please reconsider your decision and allow her to stay with Pioneer High School admin team. Thank you for listening.
This is Bonnie. Bonnie Polkenhorn.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a parent and thank you for letting me speak here and I'm echoing almost exactly what the, everyone was speaking about keeping Ms. Correa at Pioneer High School. Everyone right now knows about the Pioneer football team. They're winning. Andrea Correa needs, she is part of that. Pioneer has lights now on the football field. Andrea Correa. The Spark Center and the Observatory, Andrea. The ECM program with all the kids, 100 students per class, Ms. Correa. We do have a new principal, um, and new other staff. I'm not really involved much because my kids were always, never had to see, but anyway, um, everybody knows Ms. Correa. There are other issues going on out of all those happy things that I just listed. My daughter's English teacher has never been at school. She's had substitute after substitute in her English class and the English teacher finally resigned. And we need Ms. Correa to kind of help in these areas. Those students in those classrooms, they deserve to graduate high school and have English, right? Um, Ms. Correa is somebody who knows every person at Pioneer High School. And we're very lucky here in Santa Rosa, we have so many great high schools. We are really, really lucky. Santa Rosa High School is a great high school. They need an admin and an admin. Pioneer High School needs Andrea Correa. Thank you.
We are moving on to reports and do we have a CSEA report tonight? President Alfonso is not able to join us this evening. Do we have an SRTA report tonight? We do not. I don't believe so. LMC report. Yes, we're going to be asking Jason Andrews from CSEA to join us for the report.
Good evening. I'm Jason Andrews, the technology assistant and a member of the CSEA negotiating team and a member of the LMC and I'm here to talk about on that LMC meeting, which was fairly short as it was during the public safety power shutdown. So, uh, we did have a presentation from Rick Edson about the public safety power shutdown. It was, uh, very, uh, expl- uh, clarifying. We also had a brief overview from Steve Azera about continuing all the safety plans. He shared a little bit about some of the lessons we learned from the, um, lockdown that occurred, um, at the last day of school last year, especially about students and social media during, um, a safety event. That was quite a defining. CSEA is working with the district, um, in regards to how employees will be paid an additional instructional day if necessary. And our next meeting is scheduled to be November 14th.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Superintendent Tomore has superintendent report.
Thank you very much. I want to speak to a couple of things that were talked about in public comment. Uh, the first meeting about the mail applications, I think during the presentation from CNS tonight, we'll hear a little bit more about that, but duly noted, we are going to do what we're calling an after-action review on both the online registration and the online mail application, getting the voices and, uh, all the people who are involved, including some that you mentioned, Mrs. Saez, um, so that we can improve practices. I do want to emphasize that paper applications are available and if that is an issue that, you know, please let one of us know about that because we do understand that sometimes that's much easier to do, um, paper applications. Um, I do appreciate the parents and students who came out to speak on behalf of the administrators. I know it is difficult and I hope you understand that there are things, uh, because they're personnel, I can't really discuss, or we can't really discuss, um, but Ms. Correa will be back and she can attend the graduation this year. We've already made arrangements for administrators to do that. So I appreciate your comments and your feedback, um, and they are duly noted and, and, um, taken in. I want to thank Elsie Allen-Hare High School for hosting this meeting on very, very short notice. I specifically want to thank Bronwyn Shears and Kyle Thompson, the music, that the, um, teachers who operate this PAC and do have wonderful, wonderful visual performing arts programs. Sadly, because of the speed at which we had to move the meeting because of the PSP from last week to this, um, we didn't do what we would normally like to have done, and that was to use the students here to be able to operate the sound. Ms. Shear brought up a great point, that the money that we spent to rent this and, uh, provide these microphones, we could have bought microphones for the, um, department. And so, uh, it, and the only reason is because of the speed at which we had to do this. So we are going to, uh, definitely when we have meetings out here like this, take a look at what the needs are so that we can do two for. We can not only have a meeting, but we can also provide some equipment for, um, the department. Having said that, I'm going to, um, ask Deputy, look at he's laughing, Deputy Superintendent Rick Edson to, um, have, uh, maintenance staff meet with Ms. Shears and Ms. Thompson about some basic needs I think need to be met, um, here in the LC Performing Arts Center. And finally, um, the public safety power shut-off, or as I like to call them. Um, I do want to appreciate all the staff, all the parents, all the students, uh, who are involved in trying to maneuver through a very, very difficult, um, situation. Uh, Deputy, um, is going to talk, Deputy Sister is going to talk about that later in his presentation. Um, I just want to say that I know I sent three emails out in one night and I can guarantee you that that is not a normal practice of mine. What we were told by PG&E was that it was a hard shut-off, uh, that there would be no more turning on of lights because they were done. And the minute I pressed send, the lights came on at three more of our schools. So the list is, and that was from our PG&E rep, our PG&E rep said, this is it, there'll be no more coming on of lights and so we're good to go. And then the same thing with Hidden Valley. So I said, okay, Hidden Valley was the last school to come on, um, their power. We were checking, checking, checking all the way up till nine o'clock. Because we wanted to give parents ample, ample notice, um, and nine o'clock was pushing the limit because we were hearing from parents, we decided to go ahead and say that school was closed. At 9:06, I got word that the lights came on at Hidden Valley. So, uh, it is, um, with thoughtful, methodical, double, triple-checking, different data points that we make these decisions that affect so many lives, so many, so many working families, um, so we do not take it lightly. I can tell you, um, we are going to move forward with, um, whatever we can do in terms of legal aspects, um, with the Public Utilities Commission, with PG&E, because this is expected to happen five more times this school year. We could miss three to five days each time. We're looking at in June potentially making a 15 to 25 school days. So in my mind, the legislature, the governor, the PG&E CEO, the man in the moon, need to do something about this because we cannot sustain this as a community and especially three years in a row, going from the fires to the smoke and now PSPS. Um, I think it's unreasonable for our, um, community. Uh, the, the trauma, the stress that it creates, um, it is just, it's just not fair. So we will work hard on our end to be sure that, um, it's not that we don't want students to make up in these classes, we just don't see the feasibility of going into July, the beginning of July, in order to make up those classes. And students, I don't think you guys want to stay a whole nother month to go to school and then what about graduation? It's just, it's just crazy. So anyway, I'm going to end my report there and, um, please know that we are not going to take it lightly. We're not going to sit back and take it. We are going to basically push back and fight because, um, I, I just don't want to see this happen to our school district. So, thank you.
My two cents would be to really appreciate our superintendent and her cabinet and our principals and staff at the schools who, the uncertainty and our families, so, and we've all lamented and raved already against PG&E for all the different things, but just thank you for thoughtfulness and responding in the moment for the good of students, our staff. We are moving on tonight because we've had a long awards ceremony tonight to consent items. I need a motion for E1 through E9. Moved by trustee Medina and trustee Sheffield, second.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
All right. Consent items all passed. We're moving on to discussion items and action items, and the first one is an action resolution recognizing October 12, 2019 as Indigenous Peoples' Day. This is item F1 and will be presented by Director Omar Medina.
And, but before Director Medina takes over here, I'd like to have, um, Elizabeth Billy, Delmar Billy, please come up to the tables or come up to the podium, that'd be great. And anybody else that you have with your party, please have them come up. So, um, we're very, very pleased and I'm super excited that Director Medina brought this forward, brought this resolution forward. Um, and then having Elizabeth and the people with her be able to speak a little bit about this, um, I think is very, very meaningful. So I turn it over to Elizabeth and Delmar.
Thank you, thank you, board. Um, I'm Elizabeth Billy, um, Indian education community worker and, um, this is a very exciting, happy day for us and so just want to thank you. You guys are moving in a positive and great direction for our people. I know there's been a lot of, um, maybe negative stuff today or some stuff that really was kind of, um, heavy on your hearts, um, but today is a joyous occasion and I brought with us students she would like to share.
Hi. My name is Gia Alfieson. Um, I'm a part of the Dry Community Gracerie of Benapulino Indians. Um, I attend, I'm a senior at Ridgefield High School. Um, so throughout my school career, uh, being a native student has been difficult. Um, I feel like we have been invisible, um, in school life, uh, just because it felt like every other ethnicity was represented except for us. Um, so I'm glad and thankful that this is finally happening for us, that we're finally feeling like we're being recognized. Um, you know, sadly, like, because I'm a senior, I'm not really going to be able to experience all these changes, but I'm happy that for future generations that, like, my little sister is going to get to grow up and get to experience all these changes. Um, I felt like, you know, like the native community at school is very important to be represented. Uh, as a native student, it is pretty difficult, um, just being excited to go to school. Um, a lot of my family members didn't even get to graduate high school. So for me, it's very important as a native student to kind of change things, um, and make sure that native students graduate, that graduation rate is good. So thank you for finally making the resolutions to have us be noticed. I feel like it's going to be a very great change to our community.
And unfortunately, I always represent a guest, uh, so Superintendent Gia, does have a guest for you? Um, and we want the others to introduce themselves.
And the others will introduce. I, I do know he wants to just share, um, something quick and I know, um, I don't want to keep it through all night, but, um, we're going to get.
Hi, my name is Angel Flores and I have three kids in the Santa Rosa State Schools right now, a kindergarten, a third grader, and a fifth grader. So I just wanted to tell a story of something that happened this school year. It was, um, made of California eight in the days, uh, it was the fourth Friday in September. And I usually go to my kids' school and I do a cultural presentation. I sit there and I am a singer and my kids are dancers, so I sing and dance and teach them a little bit about our culture. Um, when I presented, when I did our presentation, the next day, there was a student that, um, told my son that he was, uh, his dancing was gay and that he was twerking on the other students and that he was a stripper. And it was very, we're working with the school and working with the student, this school is very supportive, but it just shows you how this is, there's still issues and by you doing this, you are supporting us and letting us know that you have our backs, like, hey, our culture is important and you're going to teach these other students that our culture is important as well. So I really appreciate everything you guys are doing. Thank you so much for doing this and I'm looking forward to seeing the changes that happen and excited to see the curriculum that comes with it. Thank you.
Board, that is Delmar Billy, I work at Pioneer High School as a restored specialist. So I get to be the husband of this who steps up and does the frontline work. So I'm here to support her tonight and, uh, we really appreciate what you guys have done for us, so thank you. Also, a member of the Benapulino Indians up north.
My name is Rudolph Sabala. I'm a Latin Gracerie of Benapulino Indians family member and I just want to, uh, finally say thank you for recognizing indigenous people of California. It's a real honor to be here, actually see this happen and to know that my children, my grandchildren will grow up and actually know that they are recognized and supported now. Thank you.
Um, I'm Ruthia and I go to Pine.
Hello, here I am, Billy, I'm Delmar Elizabeth, Billy's daughter, and I just am here to support and want to say also thank you for what you guys are doing with the school system.
Thank you so much and thank you for the adolomie hearings. I love them, they're just gorgeous and beautiful. And I turn it over to Director Medina.
Thank you. And, and thank you again for being here. It's really, uh, meaningful and important to me as well. Um, I was sad that I had to cancel the, uh, previous meeting because it ended up that this happens after, um, traditional Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, but at the same time, I'm actually glad that it's here at Elsie Allen, named after Ol' Basil Weaver, and we're here. Um, so I think that's also important to Sabala. Um, and it's also where I take this up. To me, I identify as Chicano, Mexican descent, and the important thing for me, being Chicano, is the recognition of my indigenous roots. To me, that's very important. It's very important to the person that I am, to the pride that I have as a person, and I think recognizing that. And I think recognizing that has helped me be a stronger person, understanding my roots. And I think it's important for us all to recognize the reality of the situation that we live in. October 12 is significant because that's the day that Columbus quote unquote discovered America. October 12, 1492, five hundred and twenty-seven years ago. Today, I was kind of saddened in the sense that President Trump was meeting with the Italian Prime Minister and he talked about Columbus Day and how he really liked that day and how he thought, he alluded to Indigenous Peoples' Day and saying that, you know, he only thought Columbus Day was important. And that really, honestly, it pissed me off. So, I'm glad that we're here today and I'm glad that we're recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day because to me, it's about over five hundred years of struggle and people surviving and basically seeing we're still here despite cultural genocide and structural racism that has really oppressed people. And I think it's important for us to recognize that and to continue fighting and to appreciate the beauty of these various cultures that I think we have so much to learn from. And I think our legislature has made progress in adding laws that help to incorporate native learnings and native teachings into our education and understanding that. And so, to me, it's really important that we as a district recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. That was part of the movement rooted from indigenous peoples. And so, I did want to add that the resolution on the first step for is since October 14th, and that should be October 12th. October 12th is Indigenous Peoples' Day. And traditionally, it's observed that second Monday in October, which this year was October 14th. But October 12th, recognizing that as Indigenous Peoples' Day for this day forward, it is critically important and I'm proud to be a part of this, so thank you.
So, the resolution says what is the actual resolution when you open it?
On the top, on the therefore, on the first step four.
Okay. We'll actually change that.
Yeah.
If you could approve it without amendment, that would be great. And then when we have Director Monier sign it, we'll have a correct, that's a correct date though. And then also, Mr. Billy, can you demonstrate the way that we clap? I heard you. It isn't clap, it's a what? Oh. Oh.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution proclaiming October 12th as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Any discussions on this? Alright, motion made by Director Medina and seconded by Director McCormick.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
And Director Marina?
Aye.
Motion passes, oh.
Thank you, Director Medina. We're moving to item F two and we're going to be listening to school site reports for Professor Chavez, Lightwood, and Hady, Lawrence Cook Middle School, and El Ciallo High School.
So, as our principals begin to get set up, the process will be, it's ten minutes each for each of them to present. And then at the end, you will be able to ask any questions that you might have, or any comments. The reason again for having these presentations is for, last year was kind of a baseline where we give our board members an idea of what's going on at the schools. Now, they develop their reports to be more focused. They've really focused in on an area that they want to talk with you about and look at data with you about and talk about their challenges and then their next steps. So, it looks like Principal Rocha is up first. Are we ready to go? Turn it over to you.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Kido Morin. Thank you for having me here tonight. I was just happy to be here to present the report for our school. I know that you, the board members, have seen the theory of action. So, I know I only have eight minutes, so I don't want to read through that. I might stop while it's going. But we want to make sure that we're connecting the work that we're doing at our school with the initiatives of the district and the board and also the strategic plan for Santa Rosa City Schools. And these are the Santa Rosa City Schools strategic plan priorities, which we do feel really fit in to our school, our two-way immersion school. It's amazing how connected they are. So, our school focuses, because we're a charter school, we have, besides the district goals, we have our own goals for our L cap because we do our own L cap plan. And the one, first goal really focuses more on the academics for the two-way immersion and then the second goal really focuses on socio-emotional wellbeing of students. And this is something that we've talked about in the past at last year's board presentation, which was the cycle of inquiry, where we really hone in on something that we want to focus on as a school. We analyze evidence, determine a focus, we implement and support, and then we analyze the impact. And I'm going to be talking about that as well. So, I just want to say first that this really isn't my report, it's really our school report. This is who's on our staff and I just have to highlight how amazing our staff is. I cannot say enough about their willingness and dedication for our school, which has only been open for seven years. And just every single person that works there has just this incredible drive to make our school successful. And we could not do this work without them. And then to really highlight, last year, we had three teachers on special assignment. We had three TOSAs that really helped us implement this plan and coached our staff because we're also a new school, having only been open seven years. That's one of our struggles is most of the staff is new and it's the first place that they've worked. And so, they're so receptive to our mission and vision and we could not do this work without our coaches. So, this is the evidence. Last year, we focused on literacy and our focus was how can we improve the reading levels of our students? So, this was showing the difference between 2018 and 2019 for every grade level and the gains that were made in terms of the reading levels of students. And then this was, so this is just some pictures that our focus last year was on literacy. We really transformed our classrooms in terms of how we were teaching language arts. And you can just see some examples of student book boxes. We have Schools of Hope tutoring. Teachers transformed their rooms and made reading areas. We have a leveled book room now at our site. Imagine again that we opened seven years ago with just kindergarten and we've been building materials and supplies ever since. So, this is comparing the cohorts. So, if you look at our current second graders, where they were when they were in kindergarten and then where they were, so that would have been 2018 and where that same cohort was in 2019, and all the gains that were made in terms of reading levels. And it's pretty amazing that, you know, even first grade, eighty percent of the students were reading at grade level and then the highest gain was twenty-nine percent of improvement. And so, these are our Let's Go Learn scores that we also looked at, comparing one year to the next. And we're just really pleased that, you can see that we still have work to do, but that that focus of really honing in on the literacy levels of students and making sure that our coaching cycle and our professional development all revolved around reading and literacy, we have seen a lot of gains and we're really proud of our staff and students. And this is just to highlight the current sixth grade class because we're always asking, okay, how would the school open with that cohort? And so, in comparing their scores in English and Spanish, this was at the end of last year, but we had seventy-eight percent of them reading at grade level in Spanish and then ninety-one percent of them reading at grade level in English. And then our reclassification rates, we also looked at. That was, we had an English learner Tosa for the first time last year and she really helped our staff because as much as we're teaching Spanish, we start teaching formal English in third grade. And last year was our, we're just building. We're building every year with our English. And so, we haven't had, we've had more years teaching Spanish than we have teaching in English in terms of when that time increases. And we wanted to make sure that we're really focusing on what are we doing during our English time. And so, you can see that our, the number of students that we reclassified from 2018 to 2019 also greatly increased, from six to thirty-two students. These are just some pictures of our students that work with Schools of Hope and just their reading levels. If you ask the kids, what's your reading level, they all can tell you what level they're reading at. So, this is where they started last year and where they ended. So, they made a year's growth in a year. And this year, our focus, it's a little bit difficult because it's the beginning of the year and we're supposed to give you data and information on what we're doing. So, I'm giving you data from last year. But our gains last year in literacy and our focus was on literacy. And this year, our determining a focus is what strategies can we use to enhance language acquisition by literacy, close the achievement gap, and prepare students for college and career? And we decided as a school that we would become an avid elementary and that we would begin implementing avid schoolwide in third through sixth grade. And that we would also, I don't know why, we decided to do both of these things and move to campus at the same time, but we're doing it because our staff is amazing. We're just going deeper in GLAD, which is Guided Language Acquisition Design. And really, those two, those two programs enhance each other. They're not really, they really mirror each other. So, when we're talking about avid engagement strategies, those also really connect a lot to the GLAD strategies. And we found our teachers were already trained in GLAD, which is a way of teaching a second language that really engages students and gets them talking and using academic language. But we weren't seeing it as much in Spanish as we were seeing it during the English time because in our district, GLAD is written into the CCD units that teachers use in English. But our staff is struggling with using those same strategies in Spanish. So, last week, we have, we had two days of professional development with the GLAD trainers and they're coming back in December. And they're really helping our staff go deeper and making sure that we can start implementing these strategies in Spanish. And then with avid, I'm sure you're familiar with it, but it is a way of preparing students for college and career. And we believe that that needs to start in the elementary grades. So, these are just some examples, like I said, for phase three, we're implementing and supporting some funds that we've allocated towards this professional development. And we also wrote it into our charter. The avid part, the GLAD part was already written into the charter. And in terms of aligning this to the MVP of the district, we really do feel like we are preparing students to be life-ready learners. We, the balanced education that really fits in with GLAD and avid, high-quality staff where we're consistently providing training and coaching to our teachers, we're allocating resources to teaching and learning, and we have very engaged families and we have community partnerships. This is, these are just some pictures of avid and the GLAD schoolwide. I think I'm going over my time. Students with their agendas, writing down their homework, our college corners in classrooms telling kids, you will go to college someday, whether even if it's just vocational. That is, that is a career that we need to study. Having a positive growth mindset, these are some examples of GLAD strategies to teach language and some thoughts about my own reflection, reflecting and learning. My time has run out and I don't need to share with you. But I think we're very excited with what we're doing. I would say that we feel like we have so much to do and that time is always a struggle. And teaching fifty-fifty, English-Spanish, especially when we get to fourth grade, is very complicated because we have to be very organized in terms of what are we teaching in Spanish? What are we teaching in English? And it can be very overwhelming. But with that being said, we are excited about our new focus for this year. These are some of our next steps. Our teachers are going this week to avid in Napa. The teachers that weren't trained over the summer are getting trained Friday and Saturday in Napa. So, our next focus area is to continue working out the merge with Lawrence Cook Middle School, looking at our Sback scores and determining how that impacts instruction. We know that we need to start focusing on math and making sure that we are working with our students who are at risk of becoming English learners, long-term English learners. So, thank you.
Okay, so I promise I will not go over my time, I think. Thank you, Dr. Kido Morin and the board for having me here today. And thank you to my partner in crime, Rebecca Rocha, for setting the bar so high for me now. I wish I could have gone before her. Okay, so you all know this, I'm going to just kind of go through it. The theory of action, the strategic plan, the priorities that you guys were so deeply discussing when we got here today. And I'm going to go into our school's CIPs of goals and let you know what we decided to focus on for this year. So, our goal one is increase the percentage of students meeting or exceeding standards in English, language arts, and mathematics as measured by Let's Go Learn, DMDA, Sback, district developed assessments, site-based assessments, and students' grades. Also, we wanted to adopt school-wide common instructional strategies, routines and supports. We have our students use an agenda, close reading strategies, focus on claims, evidence, and reasoning, and mathematical numeracy, problem solving, and then increase the focus on English language development. At our next SSC meeting, we will also add in the new map testing as one of the ways that we'll be able to measure progress. Our goal two is to decrease disruption and defiance by adopting school-wide common routines and supports. That would be best plus mindfulness, which we do the first fifteen minutes of every day. All students do mindfulness. Referrals to restorative resources and to community-based organizations and increased family engagement. To that goal, this year, we had a training by Noroga for dynamic mindfulness. And we have several teachers that are now using dynamic mindfulness rather than using the quiet time type of mindfulness. Often, students that have experienced a lot of trauma, if you ask them to be quiet still for fifteen minutes, they start reliving the trauma. So, dynamic mindfulness is a way that they can be mindful but not have to focus, you know, so much on what's going on in their heads. Also, as it was written in the description of our teacher, this last, I think it was two weeks ago, they participated in a peer-to-peer alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs training and that was facilitated by Community Matters. So, the inquiry cycle, Ms. Rocha, I ran the phases to you, so I'll just go into what we decided to focus on and the evidence that we analyzed. So, what you're seeing in front of you are last year's behavior incidents. And it was a little alarming that we had one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six incidents of either disruption, defiance, or disrespect. And so, we decided that this would be a good place for us to focus. It does align with the MVP in nurturing a whole student in an engaging, challenging, and safe environment. It aligns with priority one, life-ready learners, priority two, balanced education, equity, and excellence. In order to determine that focus, last year, we spent some time looking at what are the root causes of low achievement for our students at Cook? Some of the things we came up with where students were missing school, there was a loss of instructional time due to the classroom disruptions. The staff-to-student and student-to-student relationships needed some work. So, as a staff, we jointly decided to focus on social emotional learning by dedicating both time and resources to building students' abilities to reach the SRC's vision, which is students who are empowered to work together, find purpose, think critically, embrace diversity, adapt to our changing climate, and live healthy, fulfilling lives. So, the first eight days, and I know that this was brought up at an earlier board meeting, we did we did spend the first eight days doing a lot of social-emotional learning. Students did something different in every class period, every day, for the first eight days of school. Then, we didn't leave that as just kind of a one-and-done, but instead, we've built into our schedule, first and third Wednesday of every month, a fifty-minute period of time where students stay with their fourth-period teacher and do an activity to help develop them as social-emotional human beings. So this is the additional schedule that we have. And so you'll see right after Period Four, that is the SEL period of time. We have a group of teachers that have fourth-period prep and they dedicate their time during those SEL days to develop the following lessons. So this is an evolving matrix. And each time a new lesson is added, then it's added into the matrix. So analyzing the impact, it's early in the year, so it's difficult to really analyze what kind of impact the social-emotional learning is having on our students. But we did do a staff survey to get their input on how they thought it went. Now that the quarter has passed, we'll look at D and F grades and the behavior incidents to date. And so, looking at the behavior incidents to date, there has been a decrease. And I will tell you how much that was. Okay. So so far this year, we are on track to reach eight hundred and fifty-three incidents of disruption, defiance, and disrespect through the end of the year. And that sounds like a huge number, but it's actually a decrease of fifty-six percent over last year. So reflection and learning. My staff and I together, we've learned that the importance of putting connection before content to ensure that our students feel safe and accepted. Because once they feel that way, then they can focus on the academics. As a leader, I've learned that I have to model the behaviors and attitudes that I want to see in the students and in the staff. And learning and leadership to accomplish the MVP, it was recently introduced to our school staff and we look forward to using it as a guide towards forming leaders of tomorrow. So barriers for students, families, staff, and us. The biggest barrier is just patience and consistency. This focus is different. It's not on numbers, it's not on scores. It's on human beings, it's on our students, and teaching them how to develop as human beings. Next steps, challenges. The challenge is just creating meaningful, engaging lessons for the students, keeping the focus on building skills rather than expecting perfection. Next steps is a two-day reboot in January. So in January, we will go through a similar cycle to those first eight days. And also refining the lessons for next year based on student and staff feedback that we've gotten. And then our next focus area is as yet to be determined after we look at our academic achievement and behavior reports. So, thank you, and I didn't use my whole eight minutes, I guess. Thank you.
Good evening. I just noticed that I've got to start reading and I need glasses now. So, yeah, no, no, I'm sorry. So I don't have time with here. So, Gabriel, what about Principal Elsie Allen High School? I'd like to thank the board, Superintendent Kido Morin, for the opportunity to share some of what we've been going on. Again, our LCAP goals. We've already talked about theory of action. Again, making sure that what we've got going on here at LC is in congru with the district's theory of action, our strategic plan as well. One of the things about the strategic plan that we're really excited about is making sure that the vision and mission focuses on all of our students is what's really exciting for us. The priorities, again, very important to us and the work that we're doing here at Elsie Allen High School. And our goals here are to increase successful course completion while increasing the rate of A to G course completion as well. And as well as our Cook brothers and sisters and San Antonio Chavez increase student participation in Wellerton Program here at Elsie Allen High School. Again, we went through the same inquiry cycle as the other two schools as well. And some of the things that we took in as evidence to analyze was, as LCAL High School educators, using evidence-based critical, how can we get to the OK three, deeper thinking for our students? And as well, to improve student success with a better support, how can we improve attendance? And also improve on making sure that students aren't tardy. We did get some data from the state. And again, the chronic absenteeism is one of the things that has been very impactful here at our site. It did improve from two thousand sixteen to seventeen, seventeen eighteen, but it's still a large number compared to the other schools, other high schools here, San Antonio State Schools. So our focus that we started off at the end of last year was to really focus on our English scores at SBAQ as well as improving attendance. As we looked at the data from SBAQ, we noticed that writing was one of the major areas that needed some support. We had a thirty-seven percent, close to thirty-eight percent below standard, and we wanted to emphasize that this school year. We sent out a, we had a staff meeting, decided to send out a survey to see what we wanted to do as regards to evidence-based, as regard to what can we work on. And the majority of the staff decided that evidence-based writing would be something that we could focus on. The implementation this year with the Low Performance School Block Program, we have at least states with Innovator A and Sheriff Pride that supported us. We also have professional development days with Tony Award Singer to help with the evidence-based writing as well. And then again, support from our AVID teachers within our staff meetings to teach our, to help our teachers learn AVID strategies and also utilize those during our collaboration. Again, here's some more information regarding our chronic absenteeism rate, which we need to improve. Now, the sixty-two percent is sixteen seventeen. I've noticed that with some of the high schools, there's a discrepancy. So I don't know how accurate that one is, but definitely seventeen eighteen, thirty-two point nine, is pretty accurate. Now, in regards to attendance, some of the things that we've been doing that have been different are on there. One of the things that we really kind of try to focus on this year is supporting our students that are coming to school and giving them opportunities, and our teachers, to have some celebratory-type events within their classroom. I put a couple of pictures up here of what we've done. On the lower left side of the screen, we noticed that we had nothing in our lobby that supported attendance. And so we got these banners. Some of the teachers has a no-tardy party that students that don't, if a classroom has no tardies, that they will be able to have like a hoop or flow party. And it's been very successful. This next slide is thanks to Chesa Anamark. And again, looking at attendance as our tier two. And what supports do we have that? We have an intervention team that meets weekly and talks not only obviously about attendance but about social-emotional as well as behavioral situations. The next couple of slides, thanks to Francine E. Parvati, who's my data guru, ended up getting kind of a histogram of students that are missing school and how it's affecting them. So here you have students that have ten or more absences. Seven hundred and forty-six of them have As. And as you can see, it begins to spiral down. There is, I noticed, and I had this question about, who's that one student that has an A that missed forty periods? And ironically, that was a student that was at home in hospital. And so there was some, I got some clarification on that. If we go through all of them, here's the B grade, and then you start seeing the attendance go up to thirty or forty more. Here's C grade, there's D grade, and F grade. And again, some of these students that are, for example, eighty-one students with F or more, those are students that for one reason or another have stopped coming to school, but because they either moved and not enrolled at any other school, even though we've made some outreach with our family engagement folks, we've not been able to find them. So we've been working with District Office for this year to make sure that we do child find if we need to be and try to take care of that situation. Now, for writing, again, some of, in analyzing the impact, we still too early to get some results. But needless to say, I can tell you that we are refining our school-wide success criteria and we're looking at our student work and collaborating the writing portion of our inquiry. Again, the purpose of our academic assessment is to gain inaccurate information about what students don't and what can do, and what they can do. Collaboration among our teams, scoring assessments, is a strategy for increasing the consistency of accuracy of results. So that's kind of what we're working on. Again, as it relates to our attendance focus is basically keeping the community informed about the importance of attendance and how it impacts our students and their children's education. And just in reflecting, the collective reflecting in attendance, we've learned that we need our students to be present so there can be academic success. In writing, our students are struggling with writing in all subjects. And all departments need to teach writing, not just English. My learning as a leader, as it relates to attendance, I found out that I not, I not only need to worry about my students that are present, but also the ones that are not present. And I need to be of resources for our families that need support with their children's students. In writing, really, it's really just trying to get as much professional development for our staff so that they can support their students in writing, especially in the non-English subject matters. And then, sorry, I didn't put the last page, so I had to write it here. So my time, my learning and leadership to accomplish the MVP, my time, learning really focuses on the part of MVP that addresses the recognition and value of students' individuality and our community's cultural wealth and how I need to work on shedding light on what our students bring into the classroom and to our school community as a whole. Barriers, as I see, for our parents. Again, educating our parents about staying involved in the last-year student education and continued information about the importance of attendance. For students, building their confidence so that they can not only challenge themselves but also challenge us so that we can be the best educators that we can be. And for staff, trying to give them the necessary PD, BOP, crush, edge, making sure that there's time. And then for me, again, the barriers that I have, I think so much, so much time, so much to do in the whole time that I need to be better prioritizing. And I kind of finish with a quote from Belinda Marra, one of my mentors who I look up to, basically saying that the core of equity, understanding who your kids are and how to meet their needs. You are still focused on outcomes, but the path to get there may not be the same for each one. And so, to me, that's kind of the passion that I give as I try to communicate with our staff. Thank you. I guess we'll take questions.
Director Medina, then Director McCormick.
Okay. First off, CCLA, Principal Rocha. My mom was at your school yesterday because she was amazed at how energized and organized the parents were there. So, props on that. I did have some questions in terms of just the transition. I think I heard in the report that the playgrounds want to be installed. But I'm wondering, so in terms of, like I've heard before, we're around the shade of campus and like benches and places for students. How is that going or what needs are there around that, CCLA?
I think that there, because where the playground is situated right now is temporary. And so for the following school year, it's supposed to be moved. And so I believe that there's a group of parents that is trying to also coordinate with the Cook parents to form kind of a facility subcommittee to start articulating, you know, what are, and ask questions about, you know, because they are very eager to do things and they have already done two beautification days. But they'd like to have a coordinated plan so that they're not duplicating maybe what plans the district already has for the site. So I think shade is, well, it's not so much an issue right now than it was in the last few months. And I mean, everyone's, it's been actually working out in terms of, there was concern with the recess time not having an actual play structure. But we also, through our LCAP plan, contracted with an agency called Playworks. And we do this recess reboot where someone, a consultant comes every month and they stay for the whole week. And they train the staff, and they do staff on games, interactive games, which even without a play structure, the recess time has been working out really well. Surprisingly so, without having a structure there. The kids are really engaged at recess time. So I know that this facility subgroup will be reaching out soon to schedule meetings with the district to find out, what is the plan for Phase Two of the site with the merge? And then what is it that they can do that would be overlapping with the plans of the district type of site?
I'm not sure if this is more of a question for Superintendent Kido Morin, but I think I understand that at the CCLA campus, there's no like boys and girls club program. Is that because they're charter school or is there something similar? Like the boys and girls program, after-school program, something of that nature? Is there nothing there or is it because they're charter school? Or is there something similar planned?
Our current ACES program where the boys and girls club operate is at Cook Middle School. I don't know how much it spills over to CCLA because it's specifically funded for certain schools, and Cook is one of those.
Dr. Kido, CCLA is, but CCLA does have its after-school program run by our district program.
But not by boys and girls.
But not by boys and girls, exactly.
Is that like a paid program, a free program?
That is a future service, they have a sliding future service scale. And they have the same kind of exemptions for families that qualify.
You said they do?
They do, absolutely do.
For, Ms. Zanis, right? I was looking at the amount of incidents of, you know, behavior. And the first thing that comes to mind for me is a lack of respect. And, you know, I can't compare it to any other campuses. I don't have, obviously, that data to compare it to. But the first thing that was coming to mind for me is, is there maybe like an issue in terms of like discipline in the classroom? The first thing that I thought of was like, if I was acting up like that, I'd get so much trouble back when I was a kid. So the engagement interaction with parents and also like, is there, does there need to be more, more structured discipline within the classroom in terms of like just being more regulated? Because I feel like, what I see that to me, the first thing that I'm feeling is, is like kids are maybe out of control. But I know that when I was at Cook, I was a little out of control too. And I think that when I was allowed to push boundaries, I would push them. And I'm wondering if that might be something else to look at? Because I see a lot of the, what was it, SEL, right? Giving students more, maybe more skills around that. But I'm also looking at like, in terms of like the classroom and the environment, teachers, is there a look at like maybe becoming stricter in terms of like what's allowed and also how it's dealt before it goes out to an incident? And what really classifies as an incident? Like, is it when someone goes to the principal's office or what?
Okay, so there's a lot of questions wrapped up in there. And I'm going to try and address some of them. So in terms of what constitutes an incident, is any time a student is given a referral, it is put into the computer as an incident? Depending on what the incident is, it could be a fight. It could be, you know, cutting class. It could be, but in this particular case, we're looking at disruption and defiance because that's and defiance because that's supposed to be what was taken away from the educational program. Um, I know you referred to when you were at Cook and what would have happened to you if, um, if you had misbehaved in class? And it, it's a different time right now in terms of, um, what's going on at home? I'm trying to think of a way to say it in, in a better way. Um, not necessarily that parents are not being strict because they don't want to be or because they are, um, treating their, their children as, as, um, friends or, but they're, our parents are working hard, you know, and oftentimes they're not, they're not home, um, to, to take the kind of discipline. So I know when I was in school and probably when you were in school, if my parents got a phone call home that I had misbehaved, I was gonna pay for it. And sometimes that's not happening right now. Um, in terms of being stricter, we're trying to build a balance between being restorative and teaching our students how to behave, um, and being punitive so that there is a, um, an instant sting to their behaviors. And that's a fine line because in middle school, it is so important to, to teach students how to become productive adults. And so only being punitive, but not teaching them the skills doesn't work because they can't, if they don't know what they're doing wrong or they don't have an alternative to what they were doing, then they don't develop as humans. And I really see that our, our job, in addition to teaching students reading, writing, you know, math, science, those things, is really at this age to teach them how to be respectful, um, able adults. And, um, in the classroom, what necessitates a referral is different by teacher. Some teachers have, um, different skill set or a different relationship with students than others do and they don't send students to the office or don't write referrals. Or sometimes students don't act the same with some teachers as they do with other teachers. So that, um, adds to it as well. And then lastly, one thing that, that does add to it and hopefully will be taken care of very soon is, um, not having teachers. So if you have rotating subs going into a classroom, students don't trust that the adult that's there today is the same adult that's gonna be there tomorrow. And when they don't trust you, they will not behave appropriately for you. So I hope I answered some of your questions, but I don't know if there's a real pat answer to what you're asking me.
No, that, that makes sense, but I agree with some of you, because I know that I push subs too. So, um, the other thing that, um, the SEL, uh, metrics for success, I'm wondering, um, as, you know, you implemented like these, what, fifteen minutes after fourth period? Um, but how do you measure whether it's working or not? Is, is that established?
Um, if, right now, what we're looking at may not be the best indicators. Uh, what we have at our disposal right now is looking at the year incidence, um, surveying or talking to our students and finding out how they're feeling. And, um, then looking at grades because if they're in class, um, looking at attendance, then we know that they're getting a better education. Um, but a lot of it is anecdotal and a lot of it also is dependent. The seventh graders you get this year aren't the same seventh graders you got last year and they're not gonna be the same seventh graders that you get next year. So there's so many factors that, that tie into behavior, then it, it really is hard to measure.
Okay, and moving on to, uh, say that I'm a man. Um, why don't people come to school? I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
Um, I am, I am, uh, yeah, I was kind of just shocked, I was nervous, but one question that I, that, that did stand out was, um, at what point do, um, students begin like losing credit to, to absence? Like how many absences lead to like a loss of a credit?
So that went away a while ago, uh, the loss of credit. Um, and so I think as it relates to chronic absenteeism, just, again, for those folks that don't know, it's, uh, three unexcused absences gives you even, you're just, you know, you're already touring. Um, and if you're looking at ten absences, excused or unexcused, then you are a chronic absentee. It doesn't matter if it's excused or unexcused. It's a part of our job that we've been trying to do is to educate not only our students but our community to let them know that this is gonna impact their, um, not only their grades obviously, but their education. So we make announcements over the PA system, uh, about the importance, about being in class on time, being there, just so they can get an understanding.
And do you know, like what percentage of these absentees like are, I know at one point did they refer to, what is it, like the district attorney or, or is there a, a large portion?
So we've been working a lot better now this year with Patty Turner and her team of, uh, at the district office regarding having what's called SARS, which is student, uh, review teams here on site. So they come here and have meetings with the students and their families. Uh, and we do see a turnaround. Uh, they just started last year and then this year they've continued it. So my hope is that these numbers are gonna get better as this year progresses, especially with the work that Patty and her team is doing here with us. Better in the sense that more kids are gonna come to school.
And, and, you know, the, the writing issues are a concern, but I didn't necessarily see anything about like math and I know that math is also a bit of a concern.
Absolutely.
Any, any insight you could provide into what's going on with math?
Yeah, so math, absolutely, the numbers are, uh, but we decided to do, uh, the writing this year because the math is a much bigger, um, issue as it relates to not only, um, math one, new curriculum last year, um, and also the work that the math steering committee is doing at the district office. Uh, so we figured how can we have the biggest impact on our site? Uh, and, uh, part of that conversation had to do improve writing in all subject matters. And not really just rely on our English teachers to do that, but obviously with math one, there's a lot of writing within that. PE does writing, social studies have to be writing. I mean, just the other day, Erica, who was here, uh, getting the award, she was, uh, showing our teachers in social studies how to do step up to writing to be able to access and have support for our students, uh, writing better in social studies.
And well, one thing that was brought up earlier was also the, the sports situation at UCL. And I'm curious, ask your thoughts as to whether the lack of is also maybe something, um, affecting people, not coming to school, but not being as connected or engaging, like maybe, you know, cause I would think if, you know, how would I look at it? Like if, if there's things that my school doesn't have and other schools have, like, how I would necessarily feel or like what effect that would have on me? I'm wondering if you have opinions on that?
I would say that the students that are not coming to school, have been in history of not coming to school, if you didn't just start ninth grade, you're here with us. Um, and you could probably look down the list of those students, the majority of them had some academic issues even before they came to us. Um, as it relates to our athletic program, I mean, we're just in a big turnaround. Uh, again, just last year, you know, a wrestling team won a league championship. Uh, this year, even though we're a JV team, we're about forty strong on our JV team, the majority are underclassmen, so our hope is to continue with them as, as, as a varsity team for next year. But every other team, um, is competing, uh, girls back, girls soccer, boys, uh, basketball. I mean, we get a lot of students out of that camp, I mean, boys back soccer's like sixty kids that come out for that, you know, that team. Thank you. You want, I'll stop highlighting them then.
Director McCormick?
Thank you all for your presentation. Um, my first board meeting last year, the three of you presented. So it's been exciting for me to see the three of you presenting again and to see the growth and some comparison and something to, um, base these movements on. It's really exciting to see development and change and I'm so excited about as the merger's happening over there successfully, it's pretty cool. Um, I just have a, a couple of questions. Um, Principal Rocha, uh, on your first slide, your phase one analyze evidence slide, uh, on the kindergarten grade level, uh, it said at or above grade level in February of two thousand eighteen, it said seventy-eight percent with an asterisk next to it. And then that was the only one that's lower, sixty percent, um, at grade level in two thousand nineteen. What, what's the asterisk for? I'm assuming there's a reason for that.
Um, so part of the work that we did with the, uh, one with the teacher on special assignment is to look at our assessments. And so the asterisk meant that our assessment cri- our criteria changed. So what was considered accurate of all the previous year before we really focused on, um, teaching and learning and assessment and what constitutes being at grade level? Um, we, it became more rigorous and so that's also why you saw the drop because it was, um, that was a big area, especially what was happening in kindergarten. It had to do with, um, percentage of students that knew a certain amount of letter sounds by that time of, and which is a pre-literacy skill. And so our, our criteria changed, that's why.
Thank you, thank you for explaining that. I figured there was something that had to do with the asterisk there. And then I noticed on, uh, your cohort analysis that, uh, it seems like your, uh, biggest area of improvement is between second and third grade. Um, and I was just wondering what you think, you know, has contributed to that or are there key factors where that the growth has changed so much there? Why so much improvement in that area?
Um, I know that that last year was a very, um, I, I don't, I also, I don't know. I don't know if part of it is that's the first year that kids are at school being taught how to read in English as well. And so sometimes learning, because we don't really, it's something, we, we don't do any literacy in English until third grade, we start introducing it, but for example, kids aren't reading, it's, kids aren't doing reading groups with the teacher during English time, they would have access to English books and they would be, they, they're allowed to read them, but we don't really encourage as part of the two-way version model, um, for the bi-literacy. And so I think some of it is, um, they, once they can finally start reading in English because, um, the Spanish reading, it's really easy to learn how to read in Spanish because it's so phonetic. But what's interesting is even with the native Spanish speakers, you, the Spanish comprehension becomes so demanding because we're all living in an, an English dominant environment. Even the native speakers start kind of, um, fighting back against the Spanish because it's, it just gets harder and the comprehension gets harder. And, and even if you're reading at grade level and you can read it phonetically, you might have to understand what you're reading. And, um, so I think part of it might be like the kids are learning to read in English and then that's carrying over to Spanish. Because now all those skills and that excitement for readings that they're doing in English is also boosting their scores in Spanish. That's my theory, I, I don't know.
Cool, it's awesome theory. Thank you. Um, uh, Principal Zan's, uh, when it comes to your social emotional learning, you said that you guys are developing and sharing curriculum and adding it to this matrix, um, so that hopefully, you know, year after year, you can improve on it and not have to read with the wheel and you have some existing curriculum. Uh, is there any way that we or I could see some examples of that selfishly? Because I'm trying to do mindfulness Fridays with my swim team at the JC. And so selfishly, I wanna see what you're doing. And then I'm also really interested as you build that matrix, if this is something that we can successfully implement at other schools? Um, because we, I mean, I don't know, I think I've heard everyone at school speak since I've been on the board. I'm not sure. I feel like I have. But I feel like it really stood out to me, um, last December when you came and talked to us, that at Cook, something, um, you guys are doing that very successfully and being very innovative and creative and I feel like you've committed to it at a different level than we've seen at some of the other schools. And interested to see how it develops and to see if we can share that and implement that successfully at other schools. So I mean, are you guys, like how far into that are you and do you think that is something you could share or is it really maybe to your community or how do you feel about that?
Um, I think it's something that we could share, the way that those, um, not the mindfulness, the mindfulness preceded me, um, what we have done is changed the way that we do mindfulness a little bit, um, moved away from the quiet time aspect and, and given teachers more tools, taught them different ways to do mindfulness. Um, in terms of the lessons themselves, we had a group of, gosh, I would say maybe ten, I could be off a little bit, but ten, um, teachers and staff members that got together for two solid days, um, designing those lessons and coming up with them. And some of them worked and, and some of them didn't, so it is a work in progress. And the teachers were able to fill out a survey, um, not just about how the lessons worked, but which lessons engaged the students and which ones didn't. And, and we're gonna be making some tweaks for, um, next year. In terms of sharing that, I could share the, um, the link with you to the matrix and maybe you'll be able to see, uh, what we're doing. Um, but yeah, it's a work in progress. It's a try this, see if it works. If it doesn't work, we try something else and, and so that's what we've been doing. And, you know, I have a list here of suggestions that were made and then next year it probably won't be eight days, it'll probably be closer to five days because the eight days was a little bit too long. Um, you know, some of the lessons were very much sit down and, and do things and so we're gonna look at more lessons that involve getting up and, and talking to each other and moving around and maybe more things outside. So it really is a work in progress, you know, where we're trying all sorts of research-based strategies to, um, to help our kids, to give them an outlet, so.
Great, well, I encourage you to keep working on that process because it's exciting to see and that's how excellent curriculum is developed is by trying and reworking and trying and reworking. It's a great job of that.
Thank you.
And then, um, at LC, I just, I'm just so excited to see, I know it's very early as you have the focus of evidence-based writing and I'm just really excited to see how that plays out. And, um, are you just starting that now or is there any shape or form of how that's gonna look? I know you're at the very beginning of it, but.
Yeah, we're at the very beginning of it. I mean, needless to say, WASC has taken a little bit of time on this as well. Um, but our teachers have already started getting, gathering evidence and different departments have already started looking at, uh, student work. Um, so we're just at that starting point, um, and so our hope is obviously to continue it, uh, and, and really look at the outcomes because, um, needless to say, and Director Medina's pointed out about the, the load, that was the major thing that we felt that is really needed at our site. So, um, we're gonna start looking at probably, you know, semester grades as, as one kind of area to look at, um, but also, once we get through with WASC, looking again, we have another day planned with Tony Ward Singer who's gonna continue to support us with our writing as well, or supporting our teachers. Thank you. Thank you.
Director Shetland?
Thank you all for, what's his name? Network? Thank you all for your, your comments, I, I, or your presentation. I just have a couple of comments and observations, um, on the Cook CCLA campus. Very exciting to hear, um, literacy as a focus at CCLA, but, you know, being on campus and seeing the, the, the vibe where, and the other utilizing so much potential there and it's just kind of, you know, seeing with, 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 uh, both, uh, both schools being on campus, they're, uh, a partnership way to work together and use that resource collectively for your, for, for each individual school's benefit. I think it's, it's amazing, it's, it's a huge campus, uh, and that there's gonna be some growth, I know, um, and as, uh, I, I guess as the, as the years roll on, um, sort of, the campus is coming to its full potential, it's, it's really exciting, really positive. And Principal Rocha, I, I'm just amazed at what you're doing around the, uh, focus on liter- literacy. Um, and then, again, I, 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 I know Director Medina brought up that the, 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 um, the attendance and transparency issue is just something that, I, I, you know, it sounds like what, what you're doing, all the right steps on best practices and, and, um, individual support, uh, family engagement. I'm just wondering if it, there's gonna be a need for next steps and, and going through, you know, I, I, I looked into what are best practices around attendance? Um, we've had presentations on best practices around attend- attendance and maybe we're now at a point where there's a need to, to go beyond that, to step, you know, step outside this box. And maybe we're now at a point where there's a need to to go beyond that, to step, you know, step outside this box, step out of best practices and maybe create something different. Um there has been attempted, you know, reaching the, you know, out out into maybe the BLS community to create incentives, something. I just, you know, I I I want the board to look at this a little bit closer, um to think about what we can do. It's not, it it it's not just at LC, it's at at all of our schools, you know, where we have chronic absenteeism above what the state average is. Um I I I there 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 has to be a way, there has to be a solution. I think, you know, you brought up sports and campus activities. That is a real huge push, a real drive to get kids to come to school. I know it was, you know, the rural high school that I attended, um and that was something. I think that for many students, that was the only reason why. And then once you're on campus, you have to meet, you know, the the requirements to to be eligible to play. That is enough, it's a two, uh you know, it's it's a two-per, you get a, you get a win-win on that, right? Um but the real focus is just getting the butts in the seats, um that's that's step one. And and just, you know, I I wanna have further discussion, don't wanna put you on the spot. Um but so much of your presentation was on the 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 attendance and knowing that that's an issue at your school. Um and then throwing it back on us as the board and throwing it on back at the district office to say, what can we do to 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 get LC levels um down and better attendance? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Just quickly as I can. Um thank you, Principal Rocha, precisely. I really got to see that reading firsthand, volunteering there for a year in classes and and the systems you guys use. So the the numbers I saw were really great that you presented. Um looking, so you added sixth grade issue? So I'm looking forward to seventh grade and what happens. And and thank you for the work that both of you have done to to get the merge and the everything that we're doing, synergistic, synergistic click together. Um uh Principal Zanz, I wanna just um appreciate you and appreciate the staff for taking on the issue that you believe to be the number one priority right there for the school in terms of how we get kids to think about themselves and be present and grounded so that they can learn. And for uh the teachers to develop those units also, those those uh activities are very powerful. I'm wondering also though, in terms of what percentage of the student body is producing that many incidents? I don't know if you know that, but that'd be interesting to 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 see that in the in the next presentation.
Yeah, I have the numbers off the top of my head, but we do um at our meetings, our tier-two meetings, go through the students and there's the high flyers that are repeat incidents. Um and it appears that there are less students causing more incidents, if that makes sense, than in previous years. In previous years, there were more students causing incidents. Now it's just those few that we need to focus on.
Good, good, no progress. And at LC, Principal Alba Vera, um also the staff all in about chronic absenteeism in seats so they can learn and everybody moving forward. But like Director Sheffield, I wanna ask all three of you, um here's this thing, I'm trying to put it in in some wording that makes sense. That the results we see everywhere in schools, because that's our business, the results we see everywhere are due to the systems that exquisitely produce them. Right? Does that make sense to you that, right, these are the results that our system produces? So I'm asking you principals to continue to communicate with with superintendent, with cabinet, with the board members about the systems that need to be switched up and changed, unlike Director Sheffield was talking about out of the box, not just best practices, which of course is what you're doing in our system, but where can our system be switched up and changed and more than tweaked to produce different results? Because if we have staff working very, very hard and possibly getting frustrated or burned out or whatever, and they're fighting a system that's just exquisitely producing these results due to everything else that's out of our control, out of school's control, where where can we go? So just, I just keep inviting you to speak up about that and um let us hear your ideas.
Yes, so I I think to what you all did today with the recognition of the Good News People Day is a good example of how our students can feel connected. And I think, I mean, I talked a little bit about it earlier, connection before contact. I mean, I think this is part of the start of being able to do that. Because again, part of the reason some of our students don't come to school because they don't feel connected with with our science, our teachers, us as administrators. So what can we do better? So there's still a lot of work for us to do, but that definitely plays a big part.
Okay, so in my mind, there's no sacred cow, just saying. And then I wanna just appreciate everybody, uh superintendent Kedemara and principals, for paying such great attention to the strategic plan, to mission, vision, uh priorities that we have worked on, that we really are committed to believe in and how we wanna move forward. So thank you.
I also want to say that some of the things that we're doing that we haven't seen the results yet, that they'll come, is our work around ethnic studies. I think that that is where we are going to see a difference. Um I believe that wholeheartedly. And and the other thing is what Director Moreno Moreno has been involved in with the youth design career at Ridgway is also gonna get started at Rick, at um LC Allen. We need to hear from the kids why they are not connected, what is going on, and we need to hear, we need to hear it directly from them. So that's gonna be starting up very soon, um because we know, uh Principal Alba Vera knows within our conversations, things must change, and I think our parent brought it up as well, um so that LC only increases in enrollment and programs, not decreases. Director Medina.
Yeah, a couple of questions that I forgot to ask. Um first, I don't know if this is for this superintendent or, um you know, recently I saw a statement from the California Surgeon General around child trauma testing, and I'm wondering, do we do that? And if so, do we do it for everyone or just like?
We don't do it as a regular screening, but it is really not a bad idea. I've already talked about dental, so we might as well do eyes, we might as well do teeth, and we might as well do heart. I mean, I think that's a, I think we should, that's something's out out of the box, let's do it. Because it's a very easy actually assessment, um to do the ACES. I see. Um the, um I don't know, I thought there was something else I thought that would come in, go ahead.
And and the other question that I forgot to ask, um Principal Alba Vera, was around um the conversation on the bus seat earlier. Um you know, I think I heard that sometimes one or two buses are late. I think when I have looked at the website around LC bus routes, I think there was only two bus routes. I don't know if that's correct or not, but um what happens in those situations in terms of absenteeism? Do they get more late or how does that?
No, no, it's not our students' fault, no. They, we let the teachers know that there's a couple eight buses, so they're very understanding and, uh you know, they get excused. So it's, we give them the pass at the attendance office, so the students are not paying the lights for the situation.
And and I guess how chronicable a problem is this late bus thing?
I would like um Debbie to speak to that.
Yeah, so the uh, excuse me, where 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 are the bus issue? We've been working with West County Transportation. Um earlier this year, um towards the start of probably September, uh they actually adjusted route times, or we adjusted route times with drop-offs at Steel Lane to allow students to be dropped off five minutes earlier, uh because the completion of that route is to LCL. And so that was causing uh some lengthens of of buses, or that bus route in particular. Um we're still working with them. Um the executive director, Mr. Barksdale at West County is well aware of this. Uh I will follow up with him again as they try and address this, I know it got better for at least a a few days, but now it seems to have slid back into where some buses are late. Uh there's also been some construction um in that area when I talked to him a couple of weeks ago that was causing some uh minor delays as well that could not always be anticipated. So it is something that we're monitoring and we'll be working with West County on. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to I D N F three, a discussion on child nutrition ser- nutrition services CNS operations update.
While we're waiting for this to get set up, Principal Zan- Principal Rocha, did you get the scooter for the raffle?
Were you getting a scooter for it?
Did you get one yet?
No, but they decided to do a TV instead of fly.
Oh, so you can't use one that's to donate?
Yeah.
Well, donate, okay.
Good evening, uh Superintendent Kedemara, uh vice president, Fong, and members of the board. Uh tonight, we're bringing back a presentation on child nutrition services. Uh as you may recall, in July, we presented introducing Director Burke to the organization and talking about some of his initiatives moving forward for the two thousand and nineteen twenty school year. Uh as we committed to at that meeting, uh we bring back regular updates on the status of the CNS program uh as we expanded service offerings as well as tried to streamline some process and procedures. Uh so tonight, we'll go over that, including some discussion on meal applications and what we're doing uh to help our families. Uh and with that, I will turn it over to Director Burke for the presentation.
All right. All right, thanks very much. Can you all hear me okay?
Bring it closer.
Yes, ma'am. Is that better?
That's better.
Perfect. All right, well, thank you very much for having me. I'm very excited. So our first order of business is meal apps. We are going to continue, so we're encouraging everyone to please, 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 simply in meal app, if you have not done so already. We are going to continue to accept paper applications, online applications, and outreach where the families, where the students have conversations about what our barriers are and how do we work through those issues to get the support that students need. It is vitally important to us that we continue with these best practices of working with families, understanding what their needs are. Um and to that, I have some data. So to date, we have received two point seven percent fewer applications adjusted for enrollment compared to last year. That's a little bit concerning. The good news is that information has been offset by a one point nine percent increase in direct certifications, which is to say that students automatically qualify, so they don't need to apply via a paper or online application. So that's fantastic. But that speaks to some of the processes that we've undertaken to be more aggressive in our direct certification, to go to where the providers are and say, when someone enrolls in your program, shoot me an email, please, so I can serve that straight away. And we can remove that from consideration for our families. We also want to continue to listen to what our staff need and what their, what their struggles are. Um so that end, we're gonna speak to some meal app challenges. So one of the challenges that came up is there was a perception that online meal applications were not available in Spanish. They are available in Spanish. In fact, it was one of our criteria was that it had to be accessible to our community members. Uh the folks that brought this to our attention, we did a demonstration on how to switch it over from English to Spanish. Uh and once that became clear, the track was on its own. Uh so the questions were, paper apps became available in August. So we had paper applications on board, they came in delayed. Once we received them, we sent them out to school sites that had requested them. They said, hey, we need paper applications right now. So we hopped in the car, we dropped them off. We also provided additional level support, where we walk people through what a complete paper application is. Online applications will not allow you to present an incomplete app. A paper application, if you missed a box, if you missed a signature, I can't backdate your eligibility to that day. So then we have to get that complete application for your benefit again, um which is a challenge. That said, I'm thrilled to report that this year, we have a four point six percent reduction in denied meal status apps because we were much more aggressive in supporting our staff, adding the parents that brought in paper applications. So we've asked the tough questions, is this everyone in the household, including kiddos in that close school? Got it. Yeah, and that's follow-up questions were available. So for example, we found that meal apps were not available on the SOCS instruction Wi-Fi. That is a challenge at school sites because we're using Chromebooks at those places. We became aware of the issue and it looked corrected in September so that we could have more access to Chromebooks to families that wanted to complete applications online at school with our staff. And last one of these, online meal apps do not require email. There is a section on the on the application for emails that communicate any questions or follow-up clarifications. One of them, which has been very helpful with families, is the difference between being paid twice a month and every two weeks. And to a parent, I get paid twice a week or every two weeks or twice a month, it might feel like the same, it's not. And that impact in eligibility can be found, particularly if you're very much close to a guest or a donor. Uh so there is a compilation of things placed. The clarifying questions are very helpful for our families. An email is very helpful for us because we can do that very quickly and very readily, provided that families feel comfortable providing information. However, emails are not with our online applications, uh because we felt that that would be a challenge. To promote our meal applications, I had a wonderful bilingual radio interview with KBFF, KBF, KBV. Uh so one of the important questions that came up was, will my meal app impact my integration status? Integration status of people I love, or perhaps my path consideration? And the answer to that is, we don't need that. Uh meal apps are entirely a separate thing, anything that's happening with regards to public charge. And we wanted to promote that in our community so we can allay any fears about meal apps in relation to any kind of public charge information. We also wanted to make it clear that paper applications, online applications are available. It's a topic we're listening to have a unique situation. And I can happily report that we've had some lovely conversations we're hoping to provide. Uh we heard about your interview, thank you for telling us that it's okay to talk. Another thing we've done is back to school nights. Uh I really enjoy this picture. So I went to back to school nights to introduce myself, to make ourselves familiar with our our team and also to our families. So at Brookhill, for example, we had a lovely lively discussion about completing the paper applications. We actually did a training training with parents so they can go forth with their friends and say, hey, remember to mark this box in particular, it's very important, put your signature right there. And so back to school nights have been a fantastic opportunity for us to support families in completing applications, online and in paper. Typing has been an incredible resource for us. Uh we have a brief challenge where online payments became available in September. However, the efficiency that we gained through typing, in particular with meal apps and other areas of our operations, such as inventory, menu planning, and online meal app payments, has been significant. Every week, we send out an automated report of folks that have not applied for meals yet. We do that so that our team members at school sites and making engagements with families can say, I know this person, we need to have a conversation with that so that we can provide the support that's necessary. Those automated reports also go to my team where we can start making phone calls. And one of my favorite stories is a team member come up to me and said, you know, I had the third person on the list answering the phone, and they had a question about how to finish their app. I'm so glad that we're doing this. Typing makes that easy for us to do the right thing. Typing also helps us in a very important aspect with direct certification, backdating eligibility, because they automated a very, very challenging process with our prior software that enables us to go back to the earliest date possible and extending benefits. So that means that if you sign off your paper at the beginning of the month, I got it today, typing helps us go back to the beginning of the month when you signed your application. So we can extend benefits to that day. So we can extend benefits to that day and not the day that I received it. That has been enormously helpful. And to that end, it's also been helpful in the outreach we've come up as well because we have seen a pretty significant drop, as I said, in those denied meal apps because we can go back and say, hey, there's something about your application we need to talk about. And Titan complements a lot of those processes. In menu development, we are very excited to introduce a lot of new products. We've put together a menu development team in our office where we argue outrageously about what is the perfect product. And good and good is not good enough with this team. So we're very excited in October twenty nineteen to introduce chickenless chicken nuggets, chili bear game, beef heroes with hummus. And hands down, my favorite, the Korean beef even bok. So even bok, we're not familiar with it, is a meat and vegetable rice dish from Korea. And the fun part is, you put all your pieces in together and clumps are loose, and you mix it up. And so, there's a fun, there's a fun corner of the internet of YouTube videos called even bok videos. People just do silly dance moves and mix up their even bok. I'm very excited about that product. I think it's gonna be phenomenal. And I cannot wait to hear what students have to say about it. So coming soon, these are products that we tried and felt that this really wasn't right for October, but who we, do I want some of this over? So we're making a salsa de guajillo. It's also a fantastic engagement tool with some of our team members and to parents where I'd say, hey, this is my salsa de guajillo, what do you think about this? And either they came back and were like, you didn't see this guajillo, excuse me, I was like, oh no. You didn't have it or ate it, fix it, let's talk again. So that's been phenomenal. We're also working on a chili jalapeno, we're working on a chambé, goji giant chicken, a roasted pepper hummus, it's a work in progress, and a front scratch mac and cheese, which I think would be delightful, wants to be perfected. I'd like to give a couple of shout-outs to partners that have been really instrumental in helping us accomplish our goals in this short period of time. First and foremost, our folks at school sites that are providing meal app support. As I said, we have had a significant drop in the amount of denied meal apps precisely because we have people at the school sites who are working with parents to say, this is what it needs to be before we send it off to CNS. Last year, we had a significant amount of applications that had to be sent back to school sites for completion. This year, I think we've had two, which is an amount. So I can't speak highly enough of our meal app support teams. We are deeply appreciative of their efforts and the efforts that they've provided us for meal apps. I also wanna give a shout-out to Midway High School students. I thoroughly enjoyed our conversations at back to school night, having lunch. And I really wanna applaud the fearlessness in saying, hey, I'm like, this is not working for me. And I, I don't mean to embarrass you, but I do wanna quote you, we made a cucumber tomato tirope espagno. Just to kinda see how we do. And one of our favorite comments was, it didn't put me in my best senses. And I, I told that story and they said, oh, that was a student? I was like, yes, that was a student. And quite frankly, I thought that was wrong. So the feedback that we're getting, like, yes, this is working, no, it's not, this is what we do, has been fun. And I wanna say thank you for, remember Maria, for opening up that conversation so like your peers felt comfortable in talking to you. So I'm not the strange guy and he's here to talk about food and maybe talks about hummus too much. I also wanna give a shout-out to students. I know it can be a very strange thing to have a man dressed like this just appear in front of you and say, how's your lunch today? But really, the students of Santa Rosa have been enormously helpful in providing feedback. Like, yeah, I feel this is okay, really, make it spicy. I feel this is alright, but I don't know about these veterans. And so, there are some really great opportunities that take place there because students are so warm and welcoming to a guy who's gone out to ask me very much. And I'm deeply appreciative of that. And likewise, to our CNS team, without them, we would have no program. They have such tremendous heart. And their feedback is phenomenal. Hey, you know what, I feel like this isn't really an enchilada. You need to step up your game. Yeah, you're absolutely right. Our team members provide some fabulous feedback to my salsa de guajillo. It was momentarily set back for my ego, but ultimately, it's worked out of product and I'm deeply appreciative of their efforts. So likewise, continuing with partners and collaborators, I'm really excited to work with Midway High School's culinary department. The teacher there has a background in school food. We have very similar focus. We gotta get this food out as fast as we can, the best possible product, love that. So I'm very excited to work with them. I also really want them to ask me about the buses, so maybe sort of going back, because once we had a back school night, that's legit. I also wanna thanks SRJCCT. We had a wonderful conversation about teaming up with culinary programs, menu development, and have some exciting opportunities for students to work with us to challenge students and in turn, challenge vice students in culinary. Likewise, I can shout-out to the Great Wellness Center. They provided a tremendous amount of feedback and empathy and clarifying messages on how we can very clearly talk about uncomfortable things with families. And we are very deeply appreciative of their efforts to help us work with parents who may reach out and need help. And likewise, our Redden Empire Feedback peers, we are in this to end hunger. And our partners at Redden Empire Feedback have been enormously helpful in talking about policy decisions that are supported across the board realistically, people say we need a bit of help. They also talk, echo our messages about meal apps, about having conversations with us in particular. And we are deeply appreciative of their efforts. Lastly, and I talk about two things in every conversation I would have. Meal apps and we are higher as a call to action. We need people to help us execute this vision of excellence that we have. We did with heart and people who are ready to learn. And most importantly, you have to want to feed people. I think that's something that all of our team members have now and we want to add it into our ranks to execute. So we are now higher. That said, any questions, concerns, or comments?
Director? Thank you for the presentation. I was at the Ridgeway back to school night, saw that cool interaction with you guys, it was awesome. So, I know you started at the end of last year and this is like the first beginning of the school year since you've been running this program. And I know there's been some pickups and some concerns and you've definitely addressed it. It's one of the ma- major things of getting these applications completed and completed properly and submitted in a timely manner. So knowing that this is something that we need to improve, next, I assume, does it go on all year long? Or is it, you can apply all year long?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, these automated messages, the phone calls, the follow-ups, we will not stop. That's fine. I think we will just continue on until we've heard from everyone. And then, we will start preparing for next year as well.
And does, do you have to reapply every spring?
Correct. So if you are directly still in your program, like CalFresh, LawWorks, Student Medical Med, you're great. We have your automatic application on hand. However, every year, we want people to apply as soon as possible. Every year, you have to reapply if you're not in these programs. And there is a grace period at the beginning of the school year. However, we encourage folks to apply as soon as possible, take it off your plate. You're finishing registration packets, you're finishing welcome back to school things, let's just include your apps in there as well.
So my question is, it sounds like you've already addressed some concerns, made some changes. Are there other things, knowing that you know now, and I assume the biggest push is right at the beginning of the year because that's the ideal situation. What have you learned so far in this process this year that is gonna make it a better process, more efficient, more effective next year and going forward?
I think the most important thing is, I'm big on relationships. When someone sends an email, it's to the head of nutrition services. When I'm in your office and explaining, why am I here about, how are we here to support you, I'm Ed. And now Ed is gonna be here to help us. Ed's here to, this is my concern, it's a problem to fix. One of the things that we're gonna be doing is having conversations with anyone who interacts with parents and say, okay, this is what we need from you, this is what we can do to support you. And if you ever have a problem or a concern or an issue, this is my name and contact information so we can follow up. I think that one of the most important things that we have come across is, folks are not sure who to address these concerns to. Who is Ed Burke? And is he accessible, is he ready to find? When we have those issues that report to us, they were folks that either knew us or felt comfortable in speaking out. And I think it's important that we create that systemically where everyone knows, this is a procedure. If you have a problem, you're gonna call our friend, our friend Kai, or our friend Rory. And they're gonna walk you through these things that we have to do. We also found in implementing Titan that short two-minute videos on how-tos has been enormously helpful in kind of the comic academy approach. It's just a very quick shaky video, because I can't hold my phone very well, of me doing a thing on the computer. And that helped our staff implement this new process. And I don't remember how to do this one step, okay, there's a video of that. I can watch it as many times as I need to. It's available in English and Spanish. So I think that our next step would be to make a scalable model where folks can get that resource through video as an option. Further, we're gonna have an ordering system for meal apps, paper meal apps. If you feel like your school needs a paper meal app for every single student, I want you to have a little extra just in case it fall off and hit a tolerance. Then you have school sites that are sitting on very much their original stack of meal apps. That would help us to be more efficient in finding the balance between online apps and paper apps. But also, to bring it all home, is to listen, is to have conversations with parents, what was your challenge with this? And that would be what we do next year and this year as well.
And so next year is the plan to continue to have both online application and paper stuff?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
We, we have found that there is some benefits to having both. There are folks that love the online apps and there are folks that love the paper apps. And we really just wanna meet the needs of our constituents, so having both would be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Maria?
Okay, so I see you have all this delicious food coming soon and I think, my question is, are we gonna have a salad bar like any group with it too?
Yeah.
Or like, we're still healthy?
Yeah. One of the things that we want to do, and I, I like Ridgway because it's a smart campus, you're very close to us, I can walk over and join us for lunch. But also, use that as a model for other high schools. So is this salad bar concept working? Do we need to change that? Is there some changes that we should make? So the short answer is yes. We'd love to have a salad bar at Ridgway. We're working through some logistics with the administration there. We're very keen to offer that too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Tina?
Thank you. Couple questions. Or first, a comment. I, I did see some of the options for, seemed like, plant-based options, which, I mean, think of eighty-four seventy-nine, a bill of legislature I'm not sure if you're familiar with, but it's about plant-based school lunch options. It'll provide more funding for, for those programs that I think were, well, attract to, to maybe meet some of those requirements and maybe get personal funding. So I think we get to monitor that. But I'm curious as to the fiscal impact of each, let's say, each person that potentially would qualify for free lunch that doesn't apply, do we have it as to what that fiscal impact is to our district?
That is a great question. To our program, if it has potential impact, if this student is eating with us every day, that number is, we quoted when there's a meal debt expiration, we let people know, like, if you eat breakfast and lunch with us every day at the high school, there is a total cost of about nine hundred dollars of charges that could be applied if you're eating every day. We find that that provides a sense of urgency. This is not, oh, it's just three dollars, it's fine. It's over the course of every day, it adds up very badly. And in that regard, we use balances as a prioritization tool. We see you're eating with us every day, you're gonna be impacted by this, let's follow up and find out and what our gap in understanding is and what our gap in services is, so we can better support you and what your needs are. And in doing so, that conversation with the third person on my list that I call, needed a little help, needs some assurances about their unique situation, has prevented them from accruing more charges, which has led to a much more positive outcome.
And in regards to the Titan system, do people have to use it or is there also an option to pay like in cash or?
Oh, absolutely. We do accept cash or check at the school cafeteria. Depending very much on your school, some schools will accept envelopes that I take to the cafeteria. Some folks will bring it in the lunch line and they pay us at that time. But the Titan online system is very handy because you can monitor transactions and instead of going to school students, you know, you can have data read, that kind of thing, which previously is not available to us.
And in terms of like receiving apps, I'm wondering if there's like, within the different campuses, are there like workflows established where has to go through a certain person that maybe we use it before it gets submitted? Is it with the parent or, or do we find that we need further training for staff to maybe to make sure that everything is filled out properly? It sounds like it's going well, but do you think we need more training in that area at all?
I think it's very reassuring to team members that they know, like, hey, you know what, this thing that I've been doing is the right thing. So any opportunities that we have to reiterate, yes, we're doing right and we're doing great. And I have to say, the decrease in denied apps largely because of incomplete or our incomplete applications. At four point six percent, that's incredible. It really speaks to the technical skills and the acquisition that our staff have. So a lot of schools will drop it off in the cafeteria. Our staff have been trained on what a meal app looks like. And if they have questions, they can just call. Hey, Ed, do they have to have this particular thing on there, this one? Okay, and then they move on to the next thing. But I believe that the scalable model of videos makes it more democratic. Any one can become an expert on a meal app by watching a series of two-minute videos that pertain to that particular component of the meal.
And, and, you know, I'm glad to hear that we'll have paper apps in the whole, you know, in the future. But do you think that we'll have enough like data this year on like what schools need more? So that we ensure that no school runs out of apps at any point?
Absolutely. One of the things that I love about Titan is that I can run those automated reports specific to the source of the information that we receive. Our prior system is basically, once it went into the system, it bears the one report. So we can find specific to cycle level, even teacher level, on where the needs are so that we can reach out and say, I see you've been doing a great job reaching out to parents, teachers in this particular school, what can we do to support you in this? And so, there is enormous opportunities to better support people with the kind of real-time analytics that we get from Titan.
And in terms of the hiring, I'm, I'm curious if we've looked at any partnership, maybe with SRJC's culinary program around maybe work experience credits? Anything like that? Have we looked into anything like that or?
Absolutely. We reached out before school started and then the leading of school really just came over a second later. So we intend to re-engage with SRJC and also seeking out internships, partnerships, and our partners, I think, at Redden Empire. If you have volunteers that enjoy the sort of work, come work for us. It's very enriching and rewarding. It's very enriching and rewarding. And we are looking for opportunities to collaborate with them, so that would be around.
And in, in relation to the public charge, I think, discussion they talked about at KBBF, I'm wondering, like, I, I understand current law, there wouldn't affect the public charge. But I'm wondering if maybe the questions were based, or I'm wondering if the response was based on administration's current rhetoric around what changes to public charge would be. I know there's a presentation today, a link in around that, but I'm wondering if we have I know there's a presentation today, a link in around that, but I'm wondering if we have more information around that or if your response was to the current situation or to propose changes?
Well, the good news is, um, and while I, I do want to put a caveat, I'm not an expert on public charge. My, uh, my research has been very narrowly focused to the school one program. Uh, state superintendent Tony Ferrer has released a statement reiterating that the final rule, which is to say, this is what it is now, uh, does not pertain to any school food function. It does impact us, those programs that we talked about that are directly certified, SNAP or CalFresh is a program that is now part of Cal, uh, public charge. So our concern was that there would be families that felt like, well, maybe I shouldn't get anything to do with any kind of report. And we want to really just relate, that's not the case. Your apps would not have the responsibility in this regard.
And in relation to, to SNAP or CalFresh, um, have we received any county data, it's like maybe increase of people, I'm, I'm thinking of people that maybe, um, let's say this year or in the past qualified through their CalFresh, uh, just the automated qualification, where maybe in the future they'll need to, um, fill out an app. And, and are we thinking about, um, information tied to that for people that have maybe stopped receiving CalFresh because of the public charge?
Absolutely. And one of the things that we are aiming to do is to look at past year data and say, hey, last year we've been certified, this year you're not. Is there something that we can talk about? And then correlate that into, do you have an app on file right now? So I'm thrilled to report, that was one of my first questions in the beginning of the year. And I'm thrilled to report that we have a one point nine percent increase in direct certification compared to last year. Uh, which is phenomenal, but there is a possibility there's a family out there that you need to reach out to. And Titan is helping make it, that process be much, much, much more efficient and, and.
Thank you. And just for, I know for district staff, I don't know if it's possible to maybe like, um, follow up with like what that fiscal impact is per maybe app? Um, in terms of what we might be using now for a chat that doesn't submit or each potential class I student that, um, we don't actually get a app from?
Absolutely. I can prepare that and ask on Dr. Camora for a regular one of them.
Thank you.
Director Burke, thank you so much for a great presentation.
If I could just add one more comment, uh, I, I think it's important that some of the data that's being produced now because of Titan, uh, is showing us things that we only assumed before. And, uh, Director Burke has been able to show that, excuse me, although, uh, we're down a couple of percentage points in apps submitted, we're up in direct certification as he, as he mentioned. Uh, this is data that wasn't generally available in previous years, though we're not automated reports going to school sites for follow up. Uh, there is a sense of, if you know who your kids are, encourage them to, uh, submit applications. And now we're giving real data to school sites, uh, to make a difference, right? And we're not, uh, turning students away who need meals at lunch. Uh, that's one thing, you know, Director Burke and I talked about early on, uh, in his tenure. Uh, and we're taking every effort we can to ensure that we are counting on students who are eligible and, and doing the appropriate follow ups. And, uh, a lot of that's due to Director Burke, and a lot of it's due to the tools that he has with Titan that was involved, and I want to make sure to point that out.
Can I ask one more question real quick? Just the SB two six five stuff around the unshammy, um, the new thing that, that, that was just in the news recently? What would it have, might that have on us in terms of implementation as a cost to us or how does that work?
Well, I put this from, I, I, when I introduced myself to my staff, I said, hi, my name is Ed.